November Town Council meeting, ordinarily would be a Tuesday night, but last night, yesterday was Veterans Day. And we have a pretty big start off to tonight's meeting. And everyone who's here will have to stay the entire evening. Okay. Could I have, where's Vinnie Kalenda? Vinnie? Lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a public comment period where allow members of the public, if they would like to come forward and share an issue with the council that's not on the agenda, but they want to bring to our attention. And we have no one, which is always good, although we would allow whoever has an issue to come forward. So tonight is the first time in 11 years we've brought back the issuance of Citizens of the Year, the recognition of their dedicated service in the community, as well as a lifetime achievement award for a member of our community who's gone above and beyond and dealt with me for a long time.
Joe?
Yes.
You skipped over the so.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Thank you. I skipped over the Sohams National Heritage Corrida. So this has been hard work of a group of people and mainly David Weed. And I'll read it off. Mr. Weed's here. Here he is. So what we're trying to do is start a while back, I think Mr. Stanley, myself, and you brought up this conversational piece and you took it. You took it a long way. And now we're asking others and we're sending this off to the... Where are we sending this, David? We're sending this to Washington, aren't we? I think so. Right? Why don't you come on up and can speak backwards into the microphone?
Okay.
No, speak forward, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. You can all hear me. Yeah, this was a continuation of work that really started three years ago. It's a sequence to the Native American Study Committee that worked for several years on things like the land acknowledgement that you all see in front of the building here. And it's an effort to get not only Warren, but eight other communities between Providence and Somerset Bristol to not only acknowledge our history here, but to celebrate it as a national heritage area, similar to the Blackstone Heritage Area. So we're asking each of the town councils in those nine communities to vote on a resolution in support. So that's what we're asking for you tonight.
And that's what I'll be reading right now.
Yep.
So it's the Town of Warren Resolution, Sohams National Heritage Area. Whereas the Town of Warren is one of nine Massachusetts and Rhode Island municipalities on the northeastern shore of Narragansett Bay that comprise Sohams, the ancestral homeland of the Massasoia Osamookin, who welcomed the pilgrims in 1621 and forged a 50-year alliance that changed the course of history. And whereas this landscape is also the setting for other pivotal events in our nation's history, here, King Philip's War began and ended. Roger Williams founded Rhode Island, and the seeds of religious freedom took root. The business of slave trading ignited a transatlantic economy and moral outcry, and the dynamic interplay of land and water defined the history and culture of the region for millennia. Whereas national heritage areas are grassroots, community-driven programs that celebrate a region's contribution to America's heritage, are designated by U.S. Congress, but are not owned, controlled, or managed by the federal government, and are intended to encourage heritage conservation, community development, and regional collaboration. Therefore, we, the Warren Town Council, are proud to join the communities of Sohams in endorsing the designation of Sohams as a national heritage corridor. So that's a resolution, and hopefully we will pass it, and it will be passed by Joseph DePasquale President, Kerry Cronin Vice President, John Hanley Councilman, Derek L. Trombley, and Louis Rager. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you like any discussion on that motion?
I think you've got it.
All in favor? Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
May I suggest, may I suggest a second motion, that the resolution be forwarded to Congressman Hamo and Senators Reed and Whitehouse?
Can I have that in a motion?
A motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, highlight of the evening. There is he. All right. Let me make sure he was here. We are recognizing someone who, by the sounds of this, is being recognized for his work in the community, being paid. But in all actuality, this gentleman has worked for the town and for the federal government. And outside of that employment, he has always kept his foot in the door. And we are very, very honored to honor him tonight, to have him with us. I should say, we're honored to have him with us, and we're honored in honoring him, and so forth. Now, we'll get to it. Whereas, following a successful career out of state in the private sector, Michael Abruzzi returned to Warren, where he was hired as town manager in February 2002. He was born and raised in Warren, and he came from a family well-known in the community and widely recognized for public spirit. During his tenure, Michael's accomplishments were many, and his outstanding leadership was evident in every department and throughout the town. He served as manager until September 2008. Whereas, Mr. Abruzzi returned to municipal government in July 2013, when he was hired as Warren's Finance Director based at Town Hall. His experience and professionalism were invaluable to the post, which he held until May 2017. Whereas, in June 2017, Mr. Abruzzi was appointed Executive Director of the Warren Housing Authority, which provides quality housing and supportive services for low- and moderate-income individuals and families. Throughout his eight-year tenure, he led with skill, composure, and compassion, dealing with administrative issues as well as critical housing for the disabled and the elderly. The job offered numerous challenges, none more so than guarding the health and safety of Kiki Muir Village residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 30, 2025, Michael Abruzzi retired, having served the town and its people for nearly 20 years. We offer him our gratitude, congratulations, and best wishes for the future. But that's not what he's actually being recognized for. He's being recognized for coming back to Town Hall during our fiscal crisis and giving us an invaluable auditing service that we could have never paid for. And tonight, we honor him as Citizen of the Year. Thank you. Thank you and get involved.
That's it. Say, thank you.
Get involved.
Ah, I like to say a few words.
It's the only way to make a start of it.
I like to say it. I like to say a few words. You know, Michael, Michael applied for the Town Manager's position in 2002. It wasn't my first choice, I gotta tell you. But you know what? But it was the amazing choice. We ended up hiring Michael. And then and he worked for me anyway till 2008, when I left, you left. I don't know why, but the right thing. And then he came back as treasurer. And then I went on to Warren Housing Authority, and we had some real serious issues at the Housing Authority, and we had low grades. And then we stole Michael from the town. Sorry. Probably wouldn't have had the issues you have today, but we did. And you know, Michael is the best to work for. But when you're on the board overseeing things, it's like watching paint dry. He gets everything done. He's always ahead of the game. And for that, I thank you, Michael. And Michael's still here helping us out, the town, and I appreciate it. Appreciate it. And all the best.
Thank you.
So ordinarily, we try to honor a male and female. But this year, we actually are honoring a male and two females, because the work that has been performed for probably, I don't know, probably over 30 years, and brought up to where we are now, for at least the last 10 years that I know of, has been performed by not just two individuals, but they're the two individuals that are steering the ship. And they have numerous volunteers. And the work that they're doing is really helping the community, and it's helping the people that are most hardest hit. And they don't ask questions. They just are happy to be there and part of the entire community they serve. And these next two Citizens of the Year are Wendy Baker and Deidra Prue Parati. So here's a little, a very small background, because it went on for a while. I had to pick a beginning and an end. So here I go. Deidra Prue Parati and Wendy Baker, coordinators of St. Mary of the Bay Food Pantry, are hereby awarded the Certificate of Recognition as 2025 Citizens of the Year with the appreciation and congratulations of the Warren Town Council. During their 10 years of tireless work and skillful coordination, Deidra and Wendy and staff of committed volunteers have met the most basic needs and demands of the community. Their dedication and support of the Food Pantry program over the past decade has provided, on average, 170 families per week, an ever-growing number with nourishing meals during often difficult times. And it's because of this, the Town of Warren and its residents thank you, and we honor you with these certificates of appreciation. So please come on up.
Our daughter.
Okay.
You can.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
And could please say as little or as much as you would like.
Sure.
I just want to say that it takes, it takes a great team to do what we do. And a lot of our team is out there, but we do have the best team going. So on behalf of the members and volunteers of St. Mary of the Bay Food Pantry, to our benefactors, to our donors, to our community, and especially to our parish, thank you so much for your support. We couldn't do it without you.
I really don't have much to add. The team knows exactly how we feel about them if we don't say it enough. Thank you so much. This is for all of us, for all of your hard work, for our families that we drag along into the race. And I can't say enough about the Warren community. We know we live in a special town. This is the best town. In the last three weeks, that all food pantries in particular have been struggling, the Warren community, every single resident and business member, the town council, the town hall, have stepped up, and we have never felt such love and support. So thank you. This is for all of you, and we just love you. Thank you.
You should have seen their faces last week. They were wondering why I was there. Couldn't have been good news if Joe's there. No, 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 we won't shut you down. So next we have the honor of honoring John Janetto. And John Michael Janetto has had a wastewater treatment facility named after himself, for those of you who don't know that. But his hard work at the water treatment facility, when he was the commissioner of the sewer board, he was able to build a $20 million plant costing the Town of Warren only $1 million. And that's just part of what he's done. So we're actually honoring John tonight with a lifetime achievement award. And he's had quite a full life, and it's not over yet. So don't get any ideas. John Michael Janetta was born on John Michael Genetto was born on June eighth nineteen forty at the Truesdale Hospital in Fall River, Massachusetts. The third and youngest child of Alice Sblane and Frederick Genetto Senior. The day he and his mother came home from the hospital and began his life in Warren. From early on, his parents instilled an emphasis on family, faith and community. His mother Alice was a longstanding educator in the elementary schools who would often contribute to church functions, preferably in the company of her five sisters. His father Fred Senior was a local flooring merchant who was in constant motion, always known to offer services to many different causes. Growing up and still residing at thirty seven Hope Street, John will happily admit that his was an idyllic childhood and that Warren is God's country. Home at Hope Street during John's younger years was an amazing place with an ice rink in his backyard. Along with John's sister, Alice and brother Freddie and many, many first and second cousins, a host of North End and even some South End and East Warren kids came to skate at Smelly Arena, where John's earliest experiences with volunteerism and organization started to emerge. He was the owner, general manager, coach and player on his beloved Skunks hockey team. In true Warren or even Rhode Island fashion, John was awarded a nickname sometime during his youth, Mouse, and in that same fashion, the nickname stuck. To this day, he answers to that moniker. At school, he had many friends and participated in town athletics. Admittedly, John loved history, but not so much the other aspects of education. And so after graduation from Warren High School located on Main Street and what later became known as Mary V Quirk Junior High, John enrolled in the Army. His three and a half year stint in the military was his only longstanding adventure outside of Warren. Once discharged from the Army, John came back to Warren, eventually marrying Sandra Witt, another lifelong Warrenite. For the first four years or so of their marriage, they lived on Washington Street before returning to Hope Street, where they raised four daughters and continue to live today. John's legacy of service and volunteerism in Warren is comprised of, but not limited to, Saint Mary of the Bay Church, altar boy, charity drive chair, summer festival chair, clam bake chair, weekly donation collections, Warren Fire Department, Central Fire Company Engine One, sixty seven years in active duty, forty six years as captain, Muscular, Muscular Dystrophy Chair, Warren Little League, thirty six years in the capacity of manager or coach of the Yankees, also a league president. Warren Indoor Soccer League, twenty five years in the capacity of coach or president. Town of Warren, served as the building inspector for twenty three years, elected to the sewer commission for three terms. Various other community involvement, American Legion Post eleven, George Hale Library Board, Warren Housing Authority Board, Democratic Town Committee, Warren Heart Fund Chair, Warren Athletic Hall of Fame, Bristol County Water Authority, countless lending out of his blue Chevy truck. If you borrowed it, you know. And another note on the nickname thing, on a given day, depending on who he meets up with, Mouse always answers to Coach Genetto or Cap. And let's not forget the week he spent with me building tragic playground. Best week of my life. John Genetto, please come on up here and accept your lifetime achievement award.
It's too nice to go in a museum.
It's too nice to go in a museum.
Here's the mic.
Ah, yes.
You pretty much summed a lot of it up, Joe. But the best part of I heard this, uh, was when, uh, Maya told me that with this goes a reduction in my taxes. I, I, I really am overwhelmed. I go along with what Dee said and, uh, and what you, what you read here. I'd like to just say a few words about the town of Warren. I, uh, I'm blessed to have the family I have. I'm blessed to grow up in this town. For some of you who don't or kind of fairly newcomers, this is quite a community. When I was growing up in the forties and fifties, Warren was pretty much just neighborhoods. Northern across, East Warren, South End, Flower Park, Twisted and Windmill Hill. And as small as Warren is, five and a half square miles, we didn't even know kids from those other neighborhoods till we got the Joy Street School in the sixth grade. That's how small it was because we stayed in our neighborhood, but our neighborhood was the best and particularly for where I grew up. I grew up thirty feet from the railroad track, which is now the East Bay bike path. And the highlight of the day was when a train rumbled through and shook every dish and glass in the house. But growing up there, a hundred and fifty yards to the north was the Par House, we called it. It was the old abandoned ruins of the power station for the railroad. And when we played in there, it was like being in the Roman ruins, we thought. And right adjacent to that was Belcher's Cove. That's where we clammed, crabbed, swam. It was polluted, but who cared? And another hundred and fifty feet just to the east was the town dump. What a place. Boy, the treasures we brought home was unbelievable. Our parents didn't like them too much, but they were great. And then just a hop, skip and a jump and you were uptown. The busiest business center between Fall River, Newport and Providence. Cause in those days, there was no Barrington Shopping Center. There was no Swansea Mall. This was the place. You could buy anything you needed in Warren, from an automobile to a shoelace. It was great. It was just unbelievable. We had a theater, a movie theater. We had a First National and AMP, a Newberry's, a Woolworth and a Sears. We had like six, uh, pharmacies on Main Street alone. There were just, just so many places to go and, and enjoy. And a Friday night in downtown Warren was pretty much like what the Friday night is now when we have the Christmas lighting. That's how busy Warren. But I also had the great joy and pleasure of traveling this whole United States. I've seen every state in the union with the exception of Alaska and Hawaii. I've seen them all, the West Coast, the Pacific Coast, Golden Gate Bridge, oil wells in Texas, uh, Grand Canyon, the Rocky Mountains, New Orleans, Florida, and anywhere you can think of, Chicago, Boston, New York City, Washington DC. But believe me when I tell you this, to this moment today even, the best thing I ever see is when I come over that bridge and see the mill. I'm home where I belong, Warren, R.I. So tonight, a humble little kid from the northern wants to say to all of you, welcome to Warren and enjoy it. And to the Warren Town Council, thank you and to everyone, God bless you.
So for the other inductees, I hope you're still here. Come on up and, uh, we'll take a picture. Cause this is the plaque of everybody that's been honored since we started it back in two thousand and four. There are some big names on here. So come on up. And, uh, let's see. We'll go from shortest to shortest. I think this will work. If anybody has a camera.
We're up here.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, everybody. So those are our presentations. Next we'll go into theory, arguments and who knows what else this evening will bring.
Absolutely.
You gotta get him a public, uh, X card.
Yeah. Just trying to go year by year.
Yeah.
That's probably the likes. I don't know. We'll do it after. How inaudible was I?
Ah, yeah.
So he's good not to eat saltines before you do a speech like that. Or if your opponent is, give him a bunch. All right, we'll be jumping right into, uh, a business, uh, part of our meeting. Next we have, uh, interviews. And we have okay. We have interviews and, uh, we have no one for the Rhode Island two hundred and fiftieth commission. And then we have the voluntary historic district committee and there's one position available. And there are five members and two alternates. And our current alternate is Joan Brenner Coltrane and she's here. I think I saw her. Hello. If you'd like to come up and tell us why you'd want to make the jump. Seems obvious to me.
Well, excuse me, first I should say that I feel completely inadequate after listening to all those years of service. And I also have to say, I've only lived here six years, but it is a blessing to live in Warren. And I am so grateful for how welcoming this community has been. It has been, um, such a privilege. So.
It's a great start.
Well.
And you're the alternate and you would like to, to be the, the
The regular member.
Thank you.
Yes, I would.
They're swallowing. Uh, okay. So are there any questions of the applicant? She's already on the board. And, uh, okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question.
We have a question.
As the alternate, how many meetings have you sat where you actually, uh, ended up being a voting member? Have you, you've engaged and really participated as a, as an active member?
So that's a great question, Carrie. When we meet, we seat, when the HTC meets, we seat all the members. And all the members vote, even if you're an alternate member. You can't introduce a motion if you're an alternate unless you're filling in because there isn't, there aren't enough people to make up a quorum. But I've sat at all the meetings since, since I was, since I became an alternate member. I think it's been about a year and a half.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
All right.
Helpful.
Thank you. Anthony, uh, I noticed that I thought I had caught this, but I didn't. So we have our alternate applying and we have another member of the community step, stepping forward to be, uh, and the advertise. But if we were to make Ms., uh, Coltrane the regular member, do we have to re-advertise to then ask the next applicant if she would like to serve as the alternate?
You can ask that tonight, but you really need to, uh,
Advertise it.
Again, in case somebody else wants to be an alternate.
Okay. So will, uh, Ms. Lisa Martins, please come up. And if that being the case, next month you won't have to come back, uh, and interview again.
Lisa Martins, Washington Street.
Uh, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you'd like to be a part of the committee.
Um, I have a passion for historic restoration. I spent the last fifteen years um, managing and overseeing the restoration of my home on Washington Street. And I've learned a lot from, uh, some very talented carpenters that have worked on the house. And, uh, I'm just have free time now. I've retired and I'd like to get back to the community.
Are there any questions, the applicant?
I guess my question would be, uh, if in fact we do, uh, Ms. Coltrane, the full member, you are, you would like to keep your application in.
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I guess you're telling me my question would be, would you have to reapply?
No.
Okay. And she wouldn't have to be re-interviewed either. It's just what I'm concerned about is under the open meetings app.
Of course, yes.
Thought I caught it Wednesday, but I mean, uh, at the, at the department end meeting. Uh, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Joan Coltrane Coltrane and to advertise the alternate's position.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I would have to come to the next meeting?
No, you don't have to interview again and you don't have to apply again, but we are going to advertise for the alternate position.
Sure.
But you are interested in the alternate.
But you're already
Absolutely. I'm glad you asked that question. That was my question too. What exactly what does an alternate, what the responsibilities are.
Your name will appear as an applicant.
But I don't have to physically be here.
Correct.
And if there are applicants?
As an alternate.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Thank you for your time.
We, we, but we welcome you to come to the next meeting.
Oh, okay. And you
As long as we're at the top.
Yeah, yeah, fine.
Everyone feel free.
You're welcome to attend the meetings anyway, and I would encourage you to attend the next meeting if it happens before the next meeting of the council.
She means you can go to
You just lost me.
Meeting.
The, the historic district committee meeting.
Oh, attend that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
You just can't vote.
Oh, all right. What's that?
Thank you.
All set. Next we have acceptance of the minutes. These are of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five regularly scheduled meeting minutes. Anybody find any corrections or errors?
I'm gonna recuse myself. I wasn't here last month.
That's right.
I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, minutes for the
October fourteenth.
October fourteenth, regular scheduled town council meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next we have the consent agenda. These are all items listed with an asterisk and they're considered to be routine by the council. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Some of them.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Next we have an ordinance, chapter thirty two zoning ordinance, article twenty three definitions, section thirty two, one thirty definitions, article five, district use regulations, sections thirty two, thirty one, criteria for specific categories of special use permits. The amendment to this zoning ordinance will allow for the retail sale of cannabis products in the business and rural business zoning districts. This is the second reading, Mr. DeSisto.
So what you have before you is the definition of a cannabis retailer. That means an entity licensed pursuant to the Rhode Island general laws to purchase and deliver cannabis and cannabis products from cannabis establishments and to deliver, sell or otherwise transfer cannabis and cannabis products to cannabis establishments and to consumers. The cannabis retailer, uh, would be permitted by special use permit in the business zone and in the rural business zone.
I have a question.
Mr. Hamley.
Uh, Tony, it's actually under thirty two, forty six agricultural uses. Shouldn't it be in a different place in the use tables? Cause it's not an agricultural use. It's basically retail sales.
We could move that.
Yeah, I think it would fit better in a, in a different section of the, the table.
Okay.
Does that change anything in tonight's
No.
hearing?
So what did you want to change it to as well? It's either main section that it's under on the use table. It's under an agricultural use, but this is basically just a retail sales. It should be in along with the other like restaurants. That's part of the use table. There's not really
But they're not grown.
There and they're not, you know. So it should be in, in the, the gen, the general business section.
It's probably a mistake from when they were growing it.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? DeTramley? There any questions from the public?
I, I have a question.
Mr. Rego? And we'll open up questions to the public. And we'll open up questions to the public.
Sure.
So Come on down. You can come down and sit right in the front pew. Are these pews? They're from St. Mary's.
I had a bunch of concerns about public health and safety costs and all those things. But you know, since we did have the referendum, I think that would be a lost cause. But my biggest concern is the legality of this. Where the federal government says it's not legal, but the state saying it is legal. And I know that the federal government trumps the state law. So and I know it's accepting, they're accepting it. But that could change at any point because they haven't relinquished the right to go after it. That's my concern.
Mr. De Sisto, you think you can answer that concern?
I can, yes, that would be the that there's a definite risk to the business people that would be coming in. Because there is a dichotomy between state regulations and state law and, and the federal law. And how the federal government categorizes cannabis and cannabis products as still a scheduled drug.
So in essence, someone could actually open up a retail and they could actually close them all down and confiscate everything they had.
There's a risk, yes.
Federal government.
Federal government, yeah.
That's, that's the risk that's borne by the retailer as opposed to the town.
One more thing.
Mr. Hamley?
Last month, we, I talked about how I would like to see something in the special use requirements. Limiting it to not within a mile of another cannabis retailer. I don't want to see like what happened on Route Six, you got within like six hundred feet, you got two of them. And every time I drive by there, I take my light hands because nobody's paying attention when they're coming in and out. So I wouldn't want to see them that close together.
I think we can add that and if we make a motion correct.
You can, and what you might want to consider, and by the way, this is controlled by the state. And you know, John, as you know, Warren is part of a larger section where there's a limitation on the amount of retail licenses that will be granted by the by the state. I
Currently, but they can always increase that number. If we put this in, we're ahead of the game instead of playing catch-up again.
Well, you know, I've thought about it since last month when this issue came up. And I, it seems to me from research that the best way to handle that would be to limit the number of licenses to be issued in the town. And that would be in section thirty-two dash thirty-one C six, new subsection C. And that would be that the licensed cannabis retailers in, in the autonomous one would be limited to however many you want. Now, one, two.
Do we license them or does the state license them? Because if we don't license them, how can we control the number?
So you're controlled by zoning.
Okay. All right.
And if you're concerned about that, then you'd say that there'd be the mile radius.
Okay.
I think this next gentleman will have a lot to offer.
Can I just ask a question before he does? So Tony, could you talk about a site control plan and when does that happen?
That'd be in zoning.
That wouldn't be in zoning?
That would be one of the considerations that the zoning board. If this ordinance is approved, what would happen is, is that the zoning board would get the application in and would have to take a look at the, these site control issues and things of that nature. That would be in connection with the granting of the special use permit.
So, so if, if, I understand if it's a building right now in place, would it matter if there's a building in place or not a place, a building in place as far as putting it together?
If the, if a potential cannabis retailer, if that plan included building a structure, then it would also require development plan review under the subdivision regulations. So it'd be a two-step process.
Why don't we hold off on our questions? Because this next gentleman is in the industry, he's on our planning board. And I think he'll have a lot to offer in what he's about to say.
Mr. President, council members, before I get started, just to
Say your name, please.
Blake Costa, five in court Warren. Few disclosures, I am a member of the planning board. My comments here tonight are that of a private citizen.
Correct.
Secondary to that, I'm a business owner in Rhode Island. I own a dispensary in Exeter and I also own a cultivation facility. I am a licensed operator and I cannot participate in the twenty-two licenses that are being issued. So I'm, the financial gain for me is not there. I'm here today as a citizen to provide my background, the education on what I experienced in this industry and what I think can protect this town.
Mr. De Sisto, are you good with that?
Yeah, oh no, yes.
All right, so as I said, my name's Blake Costa. I've, you know, come from a strong military background, did seventeen, sixteen years in the military. After my five years of active duty, I came to Rhode Island to study at University of Rhode Island. Following that, went to a pre-med route and I found cannabis as a career opportunity. I was later in my years following the military. And it kind of fitted, fit something as I was moving in to build a family. I came up to Rhode Island to start a cannabis business in Warwick. I built a cultivation facility. Since then, I've grown it from four of my partners to a hundred and fifty employees with operation span in seven states. I've become very good at operating these businesses as a chief operating officer. In addition, I do this constantly, I'm in front of town councils, planning boards and zoning boards. I've seen cannabis implemented in towns, Jersey, Maryland, New York City, Vermont, Maine, Connecticut, Rhode Island, the states I work in, I've seen it right and I've seen it wrong. And I think you guys have the opportunity to not only capitalize on this, but do it right to protect our town. To the point of cabinet at stores, that is something I've seen throughout in ordinances and regulations. I think that is a brilliant idea. We don't need a hundred dispensaries here, you maybe need two. You only need a couple. What the market look like and what it will do to this town? This is a four million dollar store. The Portsmouth tax data is public. They've collected about a hundred thousand dollars from one dispensary servicing all of Aquinic Island. They're probably doing based on the math around four million a year. These aren't huge businesses, they have high operating costs. So that size of a dispensary, four million, you can anticipate around two hundred cars or two hundred transactions daily throughout a three hundred and sixty day calendar year. With that being said, this isn't going to be like Northeast Alternative, which sees probably approximately six hundred cars a day on Route Six. It's going to be a fraction of that. You're capturing the individuals going to Aquinic Island, going to Bristol or from the community. You're not going to see a lot of traffic, but that is a major pinpoint that can impact our town. So when we cite these, ensuring that the planning or zoning board has the appropriate authority to make sure they mitigate the traffic impact of the businesses is the best thing for our community. So not, and I only have three minutes, but you know, between cap in the businesses, ensuring there's a good odor mitigation plan. Odor mitigation, it's not a big thing, but it could be a nuisance to some people. I'm sure some of you probably wonder why I smell like cannabis today because I did come from my cultivation facility. So making sure they have good odor mitigation practices, making sure we're not lighting up the skies. I was guilty of this in Exeter, Rhode Island, I wasn't conscious enough. And I put out my lights and I installed them wrong. And in North Kingstown, I was able to see my development. I took steps to fix it, but those are things, if the town didn't have ordinances and I wasn't a good business operator, they might not, they might have been like, they can't do anything now. I'm polluting the, the sky and I'm ruining the environment for our community. Traffic impact, ensuring there's a qualified traffic impact study, we're having the peer review. That's the biggest thing that can impact it. As you see, what six hundred people coming out of Northeast Alternatives looks like, it's crazy. Will we have that here? I'm saying no, but is there an opportunity that this store does flourish and do well? Yes. So to protect ourselves, mitigating the traffic. As far as the security risk and the risk to the minors, I operate probably two hundred and fifty thousand transactions a year throughout all my businesses. I'm giving out a lot of product. Not once in the past eight years have I had a parent group, a police department, a school come to me because young children are getting this in their hands. That's an invalid argument and I would challenge that argument each time. Additionally, for security, these, we have strict security requirements. We're one of the only regulated businesses where the regulators can go into our security system at any point and see our cameras. The security footprint from a cannabis dispensary is not, you can't see it from the outside. It's not barbed wire fences. They're not trying to block it off, they want people to come, but it's safe. You have a lot of times less windows. You have a facility that's more hardened on the inside where if someone does break in, they're not going to get the product. You have to have it in a secure vault. In addition, every product that comes in that door is tracked by the C to sale tracking system metric. That's state mandated, you have to account for every grant. And every time, let's say I dispensed, you dispense a product wrong, you have to provide an explanation to the state why you can't account for that. So the internal theft of it is mitigated by the state. Lastly, the state regulatory body over the years has grown. They are very good at managing these businesses. They show up unannounced, they inspect you. They go into your system, they check your records, they do due diligence on the owner and operators. These are safe businesses. They don't have a negative impact to the community unless we let them. By allowing too many in the town and by not ensuring we mitigate where we place them and having additional traffic on Child Street or Main Street, that'd be like the worst case. We never want to see this place, so this is a market street, a Medicom type of use. So I don't really have anything scripted, I just want to give you some information. I'm a resource for the town, I'm a member of this community. Like Mr. Bruzy said, I'm just here to get involved. So if there's any questions from the town council, I would love to answer them.
Any questions?
I guess I'm gonna ask the same question I asked Tony about the legality of, from the federal, you know.
Well, he doesn't have anything different to
Well, yeah, and I think that, well
He's faced those questions before.
As a town, right, like as a business owner, I take that risk, I know that. My kids' future is wrapped up in this business. Like this is my livelihood, I understand I take that risk. But as a town, I don't, you know, what is a risk to us? If they get shut down, they get shut down. Maybe we got a year of revenue. A year out of a four million dollar store could be a hundred thousand dollars in revenue for us. That's a significant impact, especially for those of us who, you know, we know what the budget looks like, we can use that.
So let me tell you where I see the liability and Tony, you're our legal counsel. So we would give them a license.
Well, so the way the licenses of this work is a state. It used to be run by DBR, Office of Cannabis Regulation. Now it's under the governor with the Cannabis Control Commission. They, they're going to do a lottery, this is how I got my store. Someone goes in with the blindfold, picture number out, you get a store. They're split between multiple zones, they're only going to allow twenty-two. Individual gets a license, they need to show that they have a property secured and that their town would like it. Then that individual is going to have to enter into lease, get all the appropriate assurances and then come for the special use permit, which is going to be its own process. Once they're done with that, they can build out their dispensary. Throughout that process, the state is going to check in on them on how they're building it out. They'll have to submit SOPs, background checks, staffing plans, labor peace agreements. A skew of things that need to go to the state. Then the state comes in, inspects, says you meet all the requirements, you're safe. Here's a license, pay us half a million dollars. That's what it takes every year to keep this license. And then the state will inspect you and you'll renew it yearly. As a town, and I've seen town issues licenses in the past. From a town professional standpoint, I would advise against that. It's the state does a very good job managing this, they have the workforce in place. As a small town, we shouldn't burn ourselves with licensing them. So it'd be the state that controls the license.
Well, that's kind of my question, if we were to give them a license, and that's a good recommendation. We were to give them a license and all of a sudden someone goes in there, buys a lot of marijuana, has an accident. Is there a liability towards us? Where someone could say, hey, you know what, this accident was caused because of the marijuana that was sold at that store that you wish it a license to and you really shouldn't have because it was against federal law?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Costa is correct. What you're being asked to do tonight is to enact the necessary zoning regulations to allow for this use. But the license is issued by the state, so there'd be no liability to the town. Also, with the issuance of the license, that doesn't automatically attach liability to the state for that license. Rather, the liability would go to the retailer, the retail establishment.
Of which we, you know, most retailers, as I do, we carry liability and product, product and liability insurance.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Tromley?
Mr. Costa, thank you for being here tonight. Sorry, Costa or Costa?
Costa.
Costa, thank you. My question would be, just for clarification for the public's purpose, even if we pass, if we pass this tonight, it would still, a business would still have to come before the planning board, before you and seek a special use permit before anything could get built. This is not a buy right situation that we're doing.
Correct, and before they can even do that or should invest in that, they would need to secure a license from the state, which they're only issuing twenty-two. So right now, everyone in the state's in a property grab to be a part of this lottery. They want to lock in a property and participate, but only twenty-two are going out.
So this doesn't guarantee, passing this does not guarantee that any location would be in Warren at all. But it just starts the process to potentially having that in the future.
Correct.
We're actually, we're creating an opportunity.
Correct, and we're entrusting our boards, such as a planning zoning boards, to make sure that if this opportunity would come to life, it does so in a safe manner.
Any other questions?
A motion?
And then, well, maybe it'll go And just ask if
Was the public
Is there any?
Period?
No. No. Is there anyone else who would like to chime in one way or the other on this?
Mr. President, member of the boards.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, if anybody is in line, just sit right in the front pew and you'll be next.
Just briefly, my name is Maria Ursini, I am a resident and I also am affiliated with the War of Prevention Coalition. So the state right now has eight licenses. They're opening it up to quite a few more. So it is a lottery. But the other thing that I want to make sure that you're also aware of it is some of these businesses aren't making the money they thought they would, the federal government is. And as far as our community is concerned, as far as making money, you're only looking at approximately, the most you could make is three percent. So there's still a lot more to learn about this. And remember, there will be an impact in our safety, police, fire and so forth. So the most you can get is three percent. So the money that you're going to be making, you're going to be able to have more employees and more volunteers on the fire department and employees with the police department. Because as we know, close by Route Six, I mean, you know, you can drive by there every day and there's some kind of an accident. So, and I do have further information that, you know, we can share with you. I do join a meeting once a month with someone from DOH and the statewide that we talk just about, you know, this particular subject. So if there's anything that I can or our office can help you with, be more than happy to be able to pass on some educational piece.
Thank you.
Marie, just a quick question. Does us having cannabis in town affect any of the grants we get for substance prevention or any of that?
No.
Is not
And if I was heard correctly, the Portsmouth store sold four million dollars in a year?
They had, no, what did the Portsmouth sales ask about it? That they asked me in a regular, it was about a hundred thousand dollars. So back in from half, and back without four million dollar store. With some that, assuming, because you don't bet the tax on the nuts, so their magazines are a little bit above that, we have some medical sale. But the back record was a hundred thousand dollars for the
Thank you.
So Joan Coltrane, again.
Hello.
I'm just curious about why at one point the town council was unwilling to consider cannabis, a retail cannabis outlet in Warren and why we're now considering it? Is it because the state is offering more licenses? Has anything changed with regard to our community that we feel warrants had changed like this?
Mr. Hamley?
Twenty twenty-two, there was a referendum on the ballot. The town of Warren, the residents passed the resolution to allow this in the town of Warren. That's why we're in the locations where the people that win the lottery could pick a town like Warren for it. So it's actually the voters that passed the referendum to actually allow this to happen in Warren. We're just trying to regulate it the best we can so it doesn't get out of hand and out of control. But it is, it's the referendum that drove this whole machine right here.
And the state process.
And the state.
The state process is playing out right now as well. So we had the referendum. And now the state process for dispensing those dispensary licenses is happening now as well.
So to answer your question, because I looked into this, because I had the same question. So the state said either the towns have a referendum and if they vote no, that's fine. But if they don't have the referendum, it's an automatic yes. So I think there was six, six communities, Barrington was one of them, Little Compton, it was a couple more that they opted out. But in Warren, they voted it in. But it was the state, it was kind of, I thought it was kind of tricky on the state park mandating it and if you didn't vote But it was the state, it was kind of, I thought it was kind of tricky on the state park mandating it, and if you didn't vote, uh.
We allowed the town people the opportunity to voice their opinion. By going with the referendum.
It was a sizable, sizable.
Yeah.
Number that approved it. I think it was like 60, 40. So it was.
It passed. So are there any, any other questions?
No, I, I, I was just gonna say it'd be interesting to know what the voter turnout was with regard to the number of approvals versus um, those who were opposed.
I have that answer.
But from a legal perspective, once it passes.
I realize, I realize that.
Yeah, so, so.
Mr. Rego evidently has the information.
Yeah, I do my homework.
Well, it's hard.
So we had 2,278 approvals and 100, 1,678 that were against it. So we had a total of 4,000 voters. So when you look at it from here, it says 57 in favor, 42 against. But if you look at, what do we have? 8,000 voters? So that was a quarter of percentage of people from Warren that supported it. Okay. So when you look at these numbers.
Thank you. I just, I would just express my concern about the effects of cannabis, I think. And I know that this is not, I have no influence here. But I do have concerns and I hope that we don't see, um, those concerns come to pass.
You do have influence here.
Thank you.
Really? I've had, I, I remember one year, someone brought it to our attention that their road was dirt and that their child had asthma. And it was during our budget cycle and I never knew that there was a dirt road there and we paved it. So, um, yeah, it helps. Um, the other thing I want to point out, geographically, we're in a rather unique area where you can drive five minutes down the road in either direction and be in Massachusetts. So, uh, if, you know, we were to ever say no to this, it's really down the road and I know it wouldn't be here. But it's not like the number of people that I do know who drive down the road to get it. And if they're gonna buy it and they're gonna get tax revenue to the town, that hundred thousand dollars we can spend. And I kind of look at it like a liquor store. And I know that if the police chief had any disagreement with what we were doing in this process, uh, he would absolutely tell us, uh, cause we listen to what he says and it's not really coming out that way. So. Mr. De Sisto, please, on the rest of the legal language. And again, we're not advocating for the use. We're just allowing people to have the opportunity to buy it. And tax it. In Warren. Sad but true.
So, uh, to answer John's question. I, I actually agree with Joe. I think what happened is, is in the initial drafting, it went into agricultural uses uh, because it was included with the cooperative cultivations, which are more agricultural. Uh, it is however, I think you're correct, more appropriate to put cannabis retailer into section 32 dash 53, which includes other retail uses. So that would be the first amendment. The second, second amendment, uh, again, uh, by, uh, Mr. Hanley is uh, one of two things for consideration. The first is whether or not there should be a radius between licenses. Uh, I think a mile radius is appropriate. Uh, that would be in section 32 dash 31 C, six subsection C. Uh, one mile radius, uh, between the, uh, closest, uh, retail cannabis store. Or limit the licenses. That would be a new subsection 12 to one state licensed, uh, cannabis retailer in the town. Or two, whatever it is, but that you'd have a limitation. The third one, uh, that was discussed would be in, uh, again, same section 32 dash 31 C, nine, a new sentence. Uh, traffic study, uh, shall be, uh, required to be submitted with the site plan.
Did you get that?
Those are the three, um, proposed amendments that I've heard.
What about the odor mitigation? Is that included in the language already?
That might be regulated by the state as well. That may be part of the licensing. The state's pretty thorough on what they, what they get into.
I know that a lot of things, uh, have a baseline state, for example, distance from schools and places of worship as well. I'm not sure.
Can we just add it, as you say, belts and suspenders?
Yeah, make sure that a, a, a state of the art odor mitigation is part of the requirement for a permit. I know that you drive by, uh, certain dispensaries, um, uh, or cultivators. And you can, like, I'm going to get my car serviced tomorrow and there's a place across the, across the highway and it, you can smell it. And it's, to me, it's not an unpleasant smell. I'd rather smell that and a lot of other things, but it's not something we should impose on our community.
I, I recommend then in section 32 dash 31 C, or add the following sen- sentence at the end, along with uh, odor mitigation devices approved by the building official.
Okay. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this before we take action? All right.
I have a, I think I have a motion.
Put together.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the ordinance change on the, uh, retail cannabis with the addition of the requirement for a traffic study. The addition of the odor limiting, limiting, uh, language as the solicitor suggested. And then the last two things I want to, I want to put boots and suspenders on this. I want to include the one mile radius and I want to limit the license number to one, because the state in its infinite wisdom, if they want two here, they'll overrule us and make us have to take two. But with the one mile radius, that's pretty much gonna limit us to just one, because there's very certain areas in town where you can have it. So I would like both of those in this. So in case the state decides they want to take over, we have that second part of it with the one mile radius that will cover us that way. In case the state wants to say, well, we can give the licenses to who we want, when we want. Where would they go?
Wouldn't we be able to have one on Medicom?
We probably could. We, we might be able to have two, but with the one mile radius, it's certainly not gonna let four or five pop.
Not gonna be right next to each other.
And if the state wants to issue three licenses here, the state's gonna issue three licenses here, because they really don't care what we think.
Okay.
Take care about the money.
Well, John, what if you had a five mile radius? Town's only five and a half.
That would probably be very difficult for him to back up. Yeah, the one mile, because they do one miles on certain restaurant, on a liquor license.
They agree. Yeah. I've been up to Maine there, one after another. Mr. Tromley?
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, even, we can set it at one, and then if a second one comes in that we think is perfectly reasonable, then we can increase it to two. Is that correct, Tony?
You could.
So I think that, that makes sense for.
I think the reason why I want to put the one mile in Derek is just to protect ourselves in case the state decides that they wanna jam more of them in this area. With the one mile, it's gonna limit.
And you can do, but we can do both. We can do.
Correct. I think we should do both.
One mile radius. Yeah.
Yep. And then if there was an applicant.
We could always change that.
You can change it. All right. Is there?
I will second if.
Discussion?
You have.
I believe, did, did you get that, Danny? Okay.
Mr. Rego has discussion.
Yeah, so again, when I started, uh, when I started talking, I, you know, I didn't want to get into the public health and the safety costs. And when we're looking at, you know, possibly raising a hundred thousand dollars, that may be a small cost, a, a small gain, uh, versus what could actually cost the town. But, um, again, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be against this, uh, because of the reason I initially said it was because I believe that federal law trumps this, but we can have our vote.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Nay.
Next, we have ordinance number two. And this is zoning, Article 20, sign regulations, section 32, 111, definitions in section 32, 112, general. This is the second reading. And this is asked to do with feather banner signs. And it's an amendment and it's a recommendation from our building official.
Yeah, I direct your attention to page two, uh, section 32 dash 112, A, three. Um, these, um, uh, the, the words blow up signs and feather banners.
Yeah.
Are, um, are, uh, not permitted, along with the other s- signs that are not, uh, permitted in the town. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's what we're adding.
You're adding them as, as.
Adding that language to that section.
Correct. You're adding it so that, uh, it's not a permitted use.
Are there any questions in solicitor?
Tony, if, if we were to prove this tonight, I know there's some out there. Would we give them 30 days? How would that work?
Well, they grandfathered in.
Oh, they are?
Oh, yeah. But then once they come down, that's it.
Okay.
And, you know, uh, these blow up signs, if they blow away, you.
Yeah, it is getting a little excessive.
Yes.
And I'm a little confused. The, the agenda is saying 32 dash 111, but I, my page two starts at 32 dash 112.
Yes, it should be 32 dash 112.
Okay.
Does that matter?
It does not, because it's clear from the, uh, agenda that you're banning these, uh, blow up signs.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public?
Sorry, Jerry.
That's okay. You may or may not impact this.
Is that what that's saying?
Uh, it all depends. If you take it down, you're not.
Aye, 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 aye.
You're either forever, you're violating.
Okay, heard.
Somehow.
Um, I'm Christie. Hi. Um, I own a couple of things in this town now, which is crazy to say. Um, I am a mobile food establishment and this is kind of a necessity, right? Having a sign wherever I go is something you put up because people have no idea. They would just see rainbow, um, and they'd have no idea what I do. Um, I also have the storefront now, which is in a very weird position because it's part bike path, part street. And I have these quality looking banners, if you will, or flags or feather, I think that was the word, um, that are in our planters, so that people know that I have coffee and pastry there. So places like Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's or Burger King have these giant, their corporations have these giant signs, right? They have the capability of doing that, but somebody small, like majority of us in this cute, small town, um, don't have the ability to have a sign like that, which is also obnoxious. We're talking about a banner or an A-frame or, you know, something saying what we're doing. So I am 100% against this, considering what I do for a living. And again, not being able to tell people what I actually do is kind of crippling. And I feel that way for a lot of businesses.
Well, these, uh, these are the specific, uh, bend with that ripple that just possibly the way you're using them, maybe you put them up, you take them down. What's become a problem are, uh, places in town that attach them to a fence.
Yeah.
And they start off red, white, and blue, and then they turn a faded. Who knows? Because they've never been taken down. Uh, the other problem is the guy that.
Yeah, well, nobody wants that. I mean, that's just silly.
Dead. Well, I shouldn't say nobody. I mean, there are places that don't ban them.
Heard.
So you did, it, it interests me, Mr. De Sisto, when you spoke about the grandfathered in aspect. So we have a.
In this case, it's grandmothered in.
That's right. You know your role, Joe.
Oh, you know, I, I'm learning.
Here's, here's the thing. Here, here's the thing. You, 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 you have prohibited, you have prohibited, uh, two specific types of signs. The swiggly guy.
Yeah.
Can't do that anymore. And the so-called feather banner. However, uh, you mentioned the sandwich board. That's still okay. The portable one, still okay. Uh, a banner in and of itself, that's okay. However, the feather banner, no.
But how, but, but what? But how, but, but you did say that it was a.
She gets to keep it. It's legal nonconforming.
Well, once she, once she.
If it's up, she gets to keep it.
Yes.
So that, I would like her to hear that, because I want to hear it. So she owns one. It's been up. It's illegal, nonconforming. She gets to keep it?
Correct. It's a, a legal, not, it's a prior nonconforming use and therefore legal.
See, but there'll be no more.
But if something happens to it.
Well, if it's an act of God, she can replace it.
If it's an act of God.
We have the serial number and we know.
Or in this case, Mother Nature.
Yeah.
Honestly, what we're, what we're looking for is, um, again, even with all of the ordinances that we try to. Okay, so listen seriously. Uh, what we try to do with the ordinances is not to have to really enforce them like as a, uh, go out and arrest you kind of thing. So you have it, it's there, keep it clean, keep it nice. You know, don't tie it to the fence. Don't have it fall down and blow into somebody's yard. Um, we know, I know you, so I know that you care about your business and what you're doing. Uh, so it is on the books, but as Mr. Hanley stated, uh, you do issue to keep it as a nonconforming, because it's prior to when we made this ordinance. The other, I think Mr. Tromley had something to say or no? Okay.
The other option we would, could have, if the council wants to go that way, is we could make those types of signs a special use permit, where they would have to appear before a board with certain conditions. It can only, it has to be this far from the street. It can't do this. It has to do X, it has to do Y, it has to do Z, but that would.
Some of them have laid on, across the sidewalk and just never got picked up. So it turned into like, you know, one of those kind of things.
And with a special use permit, if they, if they get out of those parameters, it would give the building official the authority to, uh, make them remove the sign or actually bring it back into conformance. That's I don't know, I don't know which way the council wants to go with that.
And we can do that down the road.
Correct.
Mr. Rego?
So you, you had mentioned you had a mobile trailer?
Yeah, so I'm, I, we've never met before. Hi.
No, hi.
Hi. But, um, I have a mobile cart. I do mop hails. Um, so I can take my cart.
Oh, yeah, we've met.
Yeah, okay.
So, so I guess my question is, if she takes it down from the trailer and moves the trailer, she's no longer grandfathered, right? Or does the grandfather go with the trailer?
Goes with the property. I'm not familiar with the signing.
Okay.
So the, the, the feather things that I'm talking about are at my storefront.
Okay.
So that's a little different. My mobile thing, I am like attached, I have three umbrellas that are on. I have an A-frame, like that's.
I think you'd be good there.
Yeah. But I'm more concerned on, it's very hard because of where it's dark and where I'm located. It's just like, it's in our personal planter. It's not on a bike path. It's not.
She's at the point, which would be, uh, how do we describe that?
Right near where I live.
Right, no question.
Used to be Larry's, used to be Larry Sunoco, like years ago.
Trying not to go to like, to 40 years ago.
Then it was Barry Martin.
Next to Burs Hill Park.
Yeah.
But it's not like, I just, and I, I kind of want to be an advocate for other business, like smaller businesses. I mean, we are not a McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts, where they have these flashy things. Like you can't afford to do something like that, but these are more inexpensive, classier looking things that get to the point and say what we're doing. They're not that wavy thing, you know, like a gas station or something.
See, I think the problem is, one is okay. When you're going down the road, like, I didn't, to be honest with you, I wasn't really paying attention until this came up. And I was like, I see them all over the place. It's, it's a little.
So we, we hear you and thank you for your, for your.
Thank you.
Bringing it forward. I didn't, don't worry, it's my job.
Uh, I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance changes to section 112, not 111. And we can always in the future react, revisit it if we want to go with special use permit.
Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have chapter 32 zoning, Article 5, special use permit. Section 32, 31, standards for specific categories of special use permits. Article 8, zoning district use regulations. Section 32, 52, service business uses. Article 23, definitions, section 32, 130, definitions. Kennels, doggy daycare application, first reading. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members, Michael Monte of Sayre, and there on behalf of the petitioner.
Yes.
So what you have before you, uh, you've seen before at this point, um, about a month and a half ago, we were before you, uh, proposing a definition for kennels slash doggy daycares. Uh, standards by which to permit that newly defined use in the manufacturing district by special use permit. Uh, and then also we're presenting an ordinance to create a licensing fee and regime for that use as well. Uh, it would be by special use permit only. The planning board, uh, heard the petition last month and unanimously found that it, uh, was consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and consistent with the purpose of zoning. Um, since the last time we were before you, we went through the, the very particular criteria um, that we were proposing, and there were some concerns about the number of animals allowed. Um, so since the planning board also shared that concern, we're proposing one change to what's before you. And I have copies of that if I could submit, uh, to the town clerk. I sent this earlier today. I don't know if it's, oh, excellent. So in addition to all of the other standards that, uh, were already before you, we're also proposing that we're also proposing that the reviewing board, which would either be the zoning board or the planning board, depending on the type of application, shall have the authority to set the maximum number of animals permitted in the kennel. But in the case of dogs, the maximum number of dogs permitted shall not be less than ten dogs per one thousand square feet of the facility's floor area. Um, so this would just allow.
Shouldn't that be not more than?
No. They want to be sure.
They don't want to limit it that way.
Yeah, so you can set a maximum, however, you can't, um, you have to allow at least ten. Yes, you have to allow at least ten per one thousand square feet of a facility's floor area.
How many, how many square feet do you have in it?
Well, if you had, if you had, um, yeah, so the facility that my client has is four thousand eight hundred square feet. So that would be forty-eight, um, forty-eight dogs. Uh, and we proposed this specifically.
Forty-eight hundred square feet? You're letting, you want to allow ten dogs per thousand? That's a hundred dogs in a one thousand square foot area.
No, that's ten thousand. No, so, uh, if there were a hundred thousand square feet of floor area, then yes, it would be.
A hundred dogs.
That would be a lot of dogs. What I'm reading right here is ten square feet per dog, or no, ten dogs in a thousand square foot. Ten times a hundred is a thousand.
Yeah, but, so every one hundred square feet, you can have a dog. So in order for a hundred, that would mean ten thousand square feet would be required. Yes, the intent, certainly if we did the math wrong, I apologize, but certainly the intent of it was to be for every one thousand square feet of the facility's floor area, you could have ten dogs.
So Max, you could have it, it's forty-eight.
Hold on.
Isn't that a hundred?
Wait, let's stop, let's stop. Who's going to be our mathematician? Because I don't want to go back and forth.
What's a thou, what's a thousand divided by ten? A hundred?
Yes.
That's a hundred dogs in a one thousand square foot area. It's pretty simple math.
I'm trying to get to a point.
No. I think it's forty-eight dogs most you could have, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so the way I, I wrote this, uh, earlier today, uh, with the idea being that you could have ten dogs per one thousand square feet.
That would be each dog would have, uh, a hundred feet.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what you mean.
Yes, and I think that's.
That's what that formula would mean.
I, that's certainly how I read it, but I'm, I'm happy to.
No, it, it's.
Have amended it, which is.
It's not simple. Yeah.
Um, and, and the reason we proposed this was specifically because the state regulations are, are very, um, are much more generous, uh, to applicants. So we wanted to create a standard that was a little bit tougher for the community here. Um, while the facility that my client has would be entirely indoors, we're also proposing that for facilities where there might be outdoor, uh, play areas, that those outdoor exercise areas would only be accessible from seven AM to seven PM.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Specific, um, you're never going to let the dogs that you are either having for doggy daycare or as an overnight, um, stay or possible multiple nights overnight, you're not going to let them outside?
So we have like a whole fenced in like front yard area at my, the air, um, my building. And so we'll be taking them for leashed walks, um, but they're not going to be allowed to play outside. We have indoor designated play areas for them. And it's mostly, it's, it's a day training facility. So everything is regimented and organized so that there's no chaos. So, um, they have different activities to do throughout the day.
I, I was just thinking like, dogs have to get outside.
Yes, we have to go for walks.
So they go outside, but there's no general, uh, play area where they're outside for, you know.
Not at my facility, but we recognize.
Other places may, but not what you're doing.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to continue?
No, um, I think that's it. Um, the rest of the standards, I think, speak for, for themselves, but I'm happy to answer any questions, um, as they come up.
Okay, Mr. DeSisto.
So, uh, to me, the key to the, um, whole ordinance, aside from the fact that this, it creates a kennel, special use permit in the, um, manufacturing zone, is the definition section, section thirty, thirty-two dash one, uh, thirty. And that would be on page seven. Uh, the kennel means a facility housing dogs, cats or other household pets overnight and or, or daycare. And where grooming, breeding, boarding, training and or selling of animals is conducted as a business. So that's what you're approving. If, if this, um, proposal is to be approved tonight, you would approve that use. It would require the special use permit by the zoning board, uh, uh, to be permitted with the other things that Mr. Monte has discussed with the limitations and everything else. The only other thing that I'd call your attention to, and I know you have it in your packet, is that the planning board actually recommended a, uh, a larger setback, uh, area than what's proposed in the ordinance. It's a seventy-five feet. I'm advised that, uh, uh, the planning board thought a hundred feet would be more appropriate. It's just something to consider. That's from the planning board. Uh, usually what they do in matters of this nature is, is make a determination as to whether or not this complies with the, um, town's comprehensive plan, which they did find. Uh, but they also put that suggestion in also. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Do, does the applicant have that room?
Uh, yes, so the hundred foot setback that the planning board, uh, referenced was for outdoor exercise areas. Uh, because, uh, the petitioner does not have an outdoor exercise area, we do not object from changing that number from seventy-five to one hundred.
If she ever wanted an outdoor exercise area, does, I'm trying to help you as best.
Well, there would need to be an entirely different type of facility and an entirely different location.
Yeah, I know, I know the site, the back of that site, it's a great big ditch and it's a swamp.
Yes, there would be, we have no objection to a hundred feet.
Just trying to make sure you don't tell me.
And if they.
I know you've been through enough.
If they did, they would have to ask for a dimensional variance for that, so they'd be further relieved on words.
Okay, uh, Mr. DeSisto. We've always had a kennel license in town for people who hobby breed. Is this in any way opening up a whole different, uh, Pandora's box in a different direction?
No, because it's unmanufactured only.
Yes, Carrie's correct, actually.
Alright, so.
That was the special use.
But you could.
As she said, repeat what she said. I don't know if your microphone picked it up.
Well, this is only for the manufacturing zone. So in the manufacturing zone, you have an expanded definition for a kennel that would include, uh, daycare facilities for, uh, dogs. But also kennel, the traditional kennel facility.
I guess where I'm over this is, there have been people who've come in to town and wanted to do a kennel. And we've always told them no. So now if somebody wants to come into town and do a kennel, they could go into a manufacturing zone and then, and have that business opportunity now that never existed before.
That's correct, yes. You, the, the, uh, previous kennel that you discussed remains.
Reading.
Hobby breeding remains the same.
Great.
The only thing that caught me by surprise on this is the, the selling of the animals.
Well, if you're having a kennel, if you're breeding puppies.
Right. But I always thought it was going to.
But it's a special use permit.
I always thought it was going to be for the, for the boarding, daycare and overnight care.
But it's a special use permit as well, correct?
Uh, uh, advised by the applicant in a sidebar, that, uh, that's not part of her business and she has no objection to that.
Okay.
Oh, you don't? I mean, you, you don't mind getting rid of that?
I, I promote animal rescue. I run a five oh one C three nonprofit animal rescue, and I would appreciate actually that being removed.
Okay. Well, we're not saying that something would be done wrong, but, you know.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't mind kind of making this to help you and not necessarily bring in something that we really weren't prepared for down the road. Alright, so, uh.
Can we move that? I kind of agree with her.
How do we scrap, um, how do we scrap that?
I think I could, if I made a motion, now, did you get a chance to review, review that confusing? So it would limit it to ten in a thousand square feet?
Correct, yes.
At a hundred, okay. Alright, that's fine. Then we don't have to change that.
Forty-eight. And then the motion to approve should be amended to eliminate sale of, uh.
And I was going to also increase the setback to a hundred feet as recommended by the planning board.
And it's otherwise, uh, acceptable.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, I'll make.
Is this a public hearing? I can't remember.
No, it's just an ordinance.
I, I guess my only, again, as long as you have the dogs on a leash, you're good. But as soon as one gets loose, you're in violation. So just be careful. It's only a joke.
Always a joker.
Always a joke.
Does anybody in the public like to speak on this issue, since it's going to be a change to the manufacturing? Okay, hearing.
I will make a motion that we approve, uh, the changes in the use table to add a kennel as a special use permit in the MB zone and change the definition to eliminate the selling of animals. And also in the special use requirements to increase the seventy-five foot buffer for the ex, outside exercise area to one hundred feet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have chapter three, Article four, kennel, kennel licenses. Section four dash one, the licensing of kennels, doggy daycare application, first reading.
Uh, so this is just the, uh, uh, connected licensing, uh, provision. So the proposal is that there would be a licensing fee each year for anyone who gets a special use permit from the zoning board, who otherwise operates a kennel as defined, and it would be two hundred and fifty dollars.
Are there any questions on that?
Did Anthony review this? You're good with it?
I am. It's in good form.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
That's the first reading.
It'll be on the agenda.
It'll be on the agenda next month with the second reading, but there you go.
Very much.
You're on your way. And again, we apologize about the legal delay for the process, but.
Thank you for your.
Back with us first on any of your future business.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Bye-bye. Uh, next we have a public hearing. This is the request for an abandonment of Sixth Street. A paper road located north of Lincoln Avenue, abutting lots thirteen D dash forty-four, thirteen D dash one nineteen and thirteen D dash one twenty-nine Lincoln Avenue. This is, uh, petition is from James C. and Mary E. Goff, forty-six Patterson Avenue, Warren, Rhode Island. Uh, owners of Platt thirteen D, lot forty-four. Um, Mr. DeSisto, how do you want to start this off? Since it's based on law?
Hi, Mr. Goff. Well, uh, you know, Mr. Goff should make his presentation, and, uh, then after he gets done, I'd like to make some comments as to the statutory requirements, uh, uh, that take place when a, uh, street of this nature is abandoned by a town.
So should I?
Why don't we have Mr. Goff?
Will I Mr. Goff hook and then?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Goff, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Jim Goff. My wife would come, but she's ill. So, um, I included in the application a letter that all of you have.
Yep.
And item number one, I need to modify because I talked to the fire chief about the access to fire hydrants, thinking that the access from the back would, would be closer to us if there was a fire, but he said the fire trucks all carry a thousand feet of hose.
Yeah.
Which is enough to get down the street to our house from the fire headed, uh, Patterson. The one on Lincoln is only about four hundred feet away, so it would be a, an accessory.
Um, I leave it up to him. Whatever you said and he said.
Yeah. Um. So you can read the rest of it. Um, the other things that have come up was, um, Monday night, my wife had to call nine one one because her blood pressure skyrocketed. So they came and came up the driveway and no problem. But I spent most of my time in the basement of a, of a ranch house. And since I'll be eighty in a month, I think about what happens if I have a medical emergency in the basement or fall and break a hip or something. And to get out of the basement, up the stairs and snake through the house or six steps up the back entrance to the backyard and easy access through Sixth Street, the, the paper street.
Doggager.
Yeah. Um, and then a week ago Friday, the Public Works Department came and put do not, dumping not allowed signs at the entrance to the paper street out at Liberty Street. One facing the lot to the east, one facing into the woods on the left and one facing our backyard. Um, and it was a brand, brand new shiny sign and I couldn't stand the looks of it. So I went out and put a trash bag over the top and nine o'clock the next morning, knock on the front door. It's a policeman saying, we've had a complaint about the sign that we just put up. That you're not supposed to put a plastic bag over the top, but he said this in a joking manner. And the previous couple of weeks ago, we, I got my wife a new car. My daughter was taking the old, her old car, so we pa, parked it right in our backyard on Sixth Street. Nine o'clock the next morning, knock, knock on the door, the police were there with a neighborhood complaint that we were parking a car on the paper street, which is ridiculous.
Well, are you aware that your neighbors are all, have a very strong opinion on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm unfortunately stuck in the position of, um, it's sort of, um, a little tiny prop concern has been blown all out of proportion. I had called the police chief two weeks ago, left a message, please call me about this. I called him again about a week ago, left a message, never heard back. I went over there to the police department Monday morning, talked to the assistant chief and said, I'd have to file a public records request to get all the phone calls the police department has received and responded to about complaints about the sixth paper street. And I just limited it to when we moved in, which was four years ago. And so we, the, somebody from the police department called me this afternoon, just to clarify that there've been innumerable complaints, photographs sent to the police department, all public works, um, about trash being thrown there, yard waste being thrown there, vehicles being parked there. And we've been there four years and there's no trash because I mow it when appropriately. Or yard waste is never dumped there, other than one during the summer. Our neighbor, Rob O'Brien, went out and with a hedge clipper, cut back some of the overgrowing, uh, rose bushes and left them on the ground. And one of the neighbors told me, he left all this, the neighbor over there left all this stuff there and he shouldn't have. And I said, I'll just mow, let it dry out and mow over it, and so what? Um, so the signs there really blew out of proportion. It probably cost the town a thousand dollars for two men to come over with a truck and put in four brand new signs. I talked to Brian Wheeler about it and, um, he'd gotten complaints. And he said he can use the sign somewhere else. So, um, I'm still willing to, um, there's also a discrepancy on surveys between the town GIS and, um, Google Maps and the survey that I have as to exactly where the Sixth Street extension is.
Um, are the, 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 the Google Maps won't have any reference to what we're dealing with?
Right. So when you look at Google Maps.
Right, but what, what I'm saying is it, it could even, Google Maps could show that it's not even there, but that's not what we'll be referencing.
I know that.
So we'll only be dealing.
But there's a discrepancy between the survey that I've provided to you and the town map that they use to notify the neighbors.
That will, that will.
And I've.
Let me, let, to pardon right there, hold right there. Mr. DeSisto, is, uh, is there such a discrepancy?
Yeah, I contacted the surveyor and he hasn't called me back about what's involved in getting a new survey, yes, sir. Where the.
Well, let's get.
Sixth Street really is.
Let's get an answer to the question.
Class one survey.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, Google Maps, uh, the town's GIS maps, they don't control. Class one survey controls, but I'd like to address some of your points.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. Goff.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for your information.
So, um, you know, this is, uh, what you're doing, uh, uh, tonight on this public hearing is governed by section, uh, twenty-four. Is governed by section uh, twenty-four dash six dash one of the general laws. And in order to abandon a uh, a public right of way, such as this uh, uh, extension of Sixth Street. Uh, the uh, town council has to make a determination. Uh, that uh, this parcel, this right of way ceased to become useful as a public right of way. If you do that. Uh, the land reverts to the abutting property owners. At the center line of the street, that would be lots one twenty-nine and one nineteen. Uh, Mr. Goff in the back at forty-four uh, is not considered in a butter because he's at the end of the dead end of that. So tha- that's what you need to do. The question is, is whether or not uh. The DPW director, fire chief and uh, police chief. Uh, uh, consider that this uh, um. This right of way has ceased to become useful. As a public right of way.
And I'm sorry, I was distracted by the. Something that you uh, put on the desk earlier this evening.
Mr. Rigo was trick or treating a little bit late. I asked for a piece of chalk.
Stop. Please seriously, I didn't hear what you said.
Okay. Uh, this is governed by section twenty-four dash six dash one of the general laws.
Yes.
The town council is required to make a determination or not. Uh, that this um, Sixth Street. Has ceased to become useful as a public way. That determination is typically made after hearing from the police chief, the fire chief and the DPW director. If that's the case. And if it has ceased to become useful as a public way. Uh, it would revert uh, to the abutting property owners to the center line. That would be uh, lot um, uh, one assessors lot one nineteen. And assessors lot one twenty-nine.
Got it.
Now, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Just one thing. If you do abandon the road. Those property owners would be required to file. An administrative subdivision. Uh, with the uh, planning board for approval and uh, then um. It would be recorded in the land evidence records and it would be uh, conclusive as to their title.
Right. I'm going to ask. If any one of the council has questions now in this part of what we've heard. Mr. Rigo.
So, so it seems like the, the people that have used for this is Mr. Goff and then whoever's on. Lot forty-five.
No, this is Mr. Goff. These two people would get it.
I, I, I realize that, but. It seems like Mr. Goff because of the. The, his hill on the front of his house has been utilizing that. Well.
Not yet.
I'd like to answer your questions first.
No, I did.
We're gonna, we're gonna do this in chunks, so right now we're gonna go over what Mr. Goff presented. And what Mr. De Sisto presented and we're gonna have the questions from the council right now. Then we'll open it to the public.
Okay.
Let me just say that again, so I think the only two people that would lose the use is are Mr. Goff and his abutter. That's right next to him. If he has the right to that, even though he has frontage on his property.
And, and Mr. Goff is the one that's asking for the abandonment. If, if the abandonment were had. Whatever access he has through uh, Sixth Street. And I don't know whether uh, how developed it is, he would lose that.
Okay, um, Mr. Hanley?
My question is rather than abandon it. Could we sell it? Could we put it out for bid? It's got some value. We put five, ten grand in our uh. General fund, it's five or ten grand that we could certainly use.
Not through the abandonment process.
But I mean, but so, but there is a way where we could actually. We could sell that piece of land if we're not using it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Charlie, do you have a question?
So should we just reject this right out since the person that is requesting the abandonment has no. Right under the statute to the abandoned property at all? From a legal standing?
Um. No, because not, i- i- in abandonment petition is not confined to those. Who would obtain title to the land.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cronin, do you have any questions at this point?
I'm a little confused by it all, but I'm gonna wait till everybody else, till the public speaks because I'm curious what this woman.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna let Alberta speak right now.
Okay, yeah, I just, I wanna understand all of the different parties involved. I've led, read the letters, looking at this.
No, you're good. Go wherever you want. Stand up, sit down.
Mr. President, just before that, just very quickly, after we hear from this young lady, could we then hear from the. Police chief, fire chief in building, but not DPW?
Uh, I'm gonna wait for them to be at the end and when we come back around to council questioning.
Aye.
Aye, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Christine O'White O'Brien. I actually have property that I've bought.
One second, please. Believe it or not, it's incredibly distracting, even though you guys think you're whispering. I don't know why we can hear it like louder, louder than you can imagine.
My name is Christine O'White O'Brien. We actually have bought the property too, but we just weren't listed.
So which one are?
We are at uh, the one right next to Goff's.
So in forty-five? Or four?
Which?
Forty, she's forty-five.
Okay, so it looks like the house is an L. Yeah.
We've actually maintained the paper road for twenty-eight years and before that his grandparents maintained that property since nineteen seventy-six. Robert O'Brien.
Thank you.
Um. So we've maintained it for decades. Um, it's always well kept. There's never trash. Um, we have a neighbor that calls on absolutely everything. Um, we parked an RV there for three months. Because we have handicapped children, so we have. Feeds, like uh, he's on a G-tube, so we have boxes of feeds that go in there. We have wheelchairs that go in there. And the, it's very hard to get from the bottom of our street. We went through the process of asking if we could park there. It took three months for the answer, hence the reason why I was there, parked there for three months. Until we got the answer that we could not park there, so then we went and, because we were just parking it there for the summer, you know, for the use of the RV. It goes somewhere else. So as far as the right of way, we get our mulch delivered back there. We get. You know, before they moved in, we got, you know, gravel, whatever we get gets delivered back there. If we have tree service, it has to access our property from back there. We would have now get permission from Mr. Goff to get to the back of our house because they would have to cross over the, you know, the corner of his yard. Um. But we barely use that property. But we maintain that property and have maintained it for almost three decades. We, so for thirty years, we parked an RV for three months. Thirty years of maintaining property. She, the one that always calls. Her daughter parks there every Sunday. They, the day she called on Mr. Goff. Because he parked his wife's car literally almost on their property, she called. And in that morning, both of her cars were parked at the top of that property. So when, I don't know who came to see us, but it was like a town planner or something. Anyway, whoever told us about that. He said there was trash all around the RV, so he went and took pictures. There was no trash, not even one piece of trash anywhere on this property because we maintained the property. So a lot of lies and a lot of misinformation, I'm gonna call misinformation, whatever, but it's never. Never been one piece of trash back there. Our kids play in that little yard. They ride their bikes up and down from Lincoln, you know. It's a right of way. That's what we use it for. Um. But. It just becomes more and more that this particular. Person calls all the time, so I told the town planner, I said, or whoever, I don't, I apologize, whoever he was. Um.
Is he?
By her, no, I don't, no, I. I don't, no, I don't. Well, whatever, he, he went, he goes around, he talks about, you know. You shouldn't park here or you should park here. This is my job. I, I think it was, his name's Tony.
Is that him?
Where, yes, that's him. What's your name?
Tony.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, so, so he comes and I, I, I tell him, I'm like, do you see any trash? So he walks around, he takes pictures of the RV was there, right?
That's a building official.
Oh, building official, sorry. Okay. Close, right? It was something to do with the town.
Sure.
Um, so anyway, he went around, took pictures or whatever and I'm like, there's never been trash in the back i- in the paper road. Why would we maintain it and just trash it? There's never been any dumping. Now we have four signs. Two right in the middle of the right of way. They put them directly in the middle, so there is no car that can drive. Through or any kind of deliveries that can be done to the Goffs, like if. If he's had a problem with his roof or a roofing truck has to go in there, nothing can access it because they put the. Do not dump signs right in the middle of the drive.
Right, that was on DPW.
Yeah, well, anyway, it doesn't matter. It's not a right of way. It doesn't, it's not a right.
Letting you know who did it.
Okay, all right.
I, I take this very seriously. I don't know if you realize that.
Okay, well, I do too, because that's why I'm here. Um. I don't know, it just seems like the more the people call, the more the one person calls, the more that she owns the property because. She says jump in, everyone else says, how high do you want to do that? Because there was snowstorm, someone parked their car there. Parking van, right? She called the police. We had the police come truck through our backyard, knock on our back door in the middle of the night. And say, is that your car? It was not our car. We didn't, why would we park back there? She knew exactly whose car it was. And she, all of my children are, you know, literally adopted from trauma. So they were freaking out because what police officer would be shining a light, knocking on the back door of a house at. Whatever time that was, but it was like ten, eleven, twelve, whatever it was. It's just, it's got ridiculous to the point where. She doesn't call on herself, but anytime we touch that property. She calls on us. And now she makes up these things that people are dumping on it. No one has dumped one piece of trash on that property. So now we're where we are today.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Nothing. Uh, I've ever done there, I've been mowing that for.
I know, he's Rob O'Brien from uh, Forty Past Nav.
Alright.
Uh. I've been mowing it and keeping it up. Basically, uh, half of the paper road is um. Taken care of. The other half is just wood line. Um, I've been mowing it and cutting the uh. The briars and stuff, so that if I do have to get deliveries or anything has to come in the backyard. That, that's available. Now, the only dumping I've ever done was after I get done mowing the paper road. I take the grass clippings and throw them into the woods. It's basically, I'm not dumping there because it's coming from there. I mean, I'm not dumping any, any excess. I'm not bringing stuff in to dump it. So. I don't know where she's getting this dumping. But there's four properties that abut this. And the only one, there's only one of them that have a problem with it. With anything to do with this paper road. We've, we've talked to her, we've talked to other people. Uh, we're not abusing it, like we said, uh, so I don't understand the whole problem. We did come here, um. Back in nine, I don't know, it was a while ago, in the nineties at some, at some point, um. One of the properties that abuts it. A contractor was trying to sell the house as a two-family and they were trying to get the same thing done. Trying, they were trying to split it so that they could sell it. Um, I came and petitioned against that because of the right of way. And I was granted the right of way. Um, so I don't understand why all of a sudden that's gonna change. Because they do use it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, I forget questions.
Alright, Ms. Cronin.
Just a clarification. When I spoke with Brian Williams at Public Works Department.
Mr. Wheeler, right there.
Mr. Wheeler, um, I asked him who. Where the. Um, requisition come from to spend the town money to put the four signs up and he said. It came from the police department. Probably haven't gotten an answer from the police department as to whether they pulled it, makes sense. Yeah.
If there's accusation of dumping on a town property. We then put up signs because it's in the code.
But.
For the town that you can't dump on town property?
Except there hasn't been any dumping in the four years that we've lived there.
Right, um, I think we're going to have Ms. Cronin at, ask some questions though.
Okay.
And look for some answers.
Okay, so let me get this straight. Mr. Goff is here tonight asking for the Sixth Street or for the paper road to be abandoned. If we agree, if we approved abandonment of that, that property. Um, it would be split down the wi- in half and half would go to whoever owns one twenty-nine and the other half would go to one nineteen.
Correct.
And that's what you want?
No.
Okay, I didn't, that you, because that's, that's not what you were saying. You, you thought that if it were abandoned, then you could buy it?
No, I thought, I didn't realize that the town ordinance said it gets split by the.
Okay.
People on each side, because this is a very unusual situation, whereas there's a third or fourth abutter.
Okay, so.
And then it gets complicated as to how to split it. Whereas you mentioned selling it, I'd be willing to listen to that.
Okay, so you no longer want an abandon because now you know what the consequences would be.
Correct.
If we didn't actually.
Split in half, that's not what I want.
Okay, so you don't want that anymore, so you will be removing that request.
I'm willing to pay for a class one survey to clarify. Where the boundaries of it really are legally.
Okay.
Okay.
That's not, what, don't you have, what's that survey?
You have a class one.
I have a class one, but it's only for our lot.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
References.
No, we understand what you mean. So you would pay for a survey for the, that other lot.
If I were, if it were a sale, I would want a class one survey to say. What is it that I might?
I got you.
Alright.
Go ahead.
And the O'Briens, you'd like it to just stay as it is, get rid of the signs and go back to life as it were, preferably with the. Neighbor.
With everybody being able to.
With.
Do it as a right of way.
Okay, please, wait, I know you're just, because she's conversational. If you have anything else you would like to say, please come to the microphone.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify what everybody really wants and because apparently you're the only.
Not you yet.
Neighbors. Involved here.
Soon.
Okay, so.
Everybody, everyone, stop, stop, listen to me. Everyone here is gonna have an opportunity to speak. Right now, Ms. Cronin is directly answering her question. Speak through the chair, not to each other.
So.
Go ahead.
If. If it is left as it is, we don't abandon it.
Right.
It would be the ideal scenario that it is. Maintained as you have been doing it, so those abutters can access their homes, their. Do whatever they need to be doing.
Like, um, I don't mean to interrupt you, go on, sorry.
Go, go ahead.
No, like if, like if we want to pull our RV in there and put all our kids feeds in there and put our wheelchairs in there and put our children in there. I mean, we can't do that. She'll call the police, I mean, literally within the second of pulling in. Anytime we access that road, public access. She calls.
Okay.
You know, and that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for public access without police phone calls.
Okay, and um. If in fact that is all that you're doing and all that Mr. Goff has been doing, that is not illegal, correct, Mr. De Sisto? What they are, their use of it to this point has not been illegal. It might just be annoying somebody, but. Their RV is parked there so they can load and unload their.
I mean, we haven't done that before. We just parked and waited for Tony to come back with an answer of if we could keep, is it Matt?
It's Matt. They were making.
Alright. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't correct me, sorry.
Okay, I think I have the question. I have the question. From what you've heard this evening, has any of what you've heard from the people who've said it? Been an illegal use of this property?
Frankly, um, what's happening is, is, by the way, you can't adversely possess. Uh, against property of this nature. Okay?
Right.
But the plain fact of the matter is, is from what I've heard. Is, is this property gets used as if it were owned by these private properties, when in fact it's town property. Is that illegal? That's a strong term. Is it proper? Not really.
Okay.
Now, I hear a couple of things. Uh, can it be used for ingress and egress? Yeah. Can it be used for storage? No.
No.
Okay.
Can it be used for parking? Eh.
Okay.
Close. Here, here's the situation. You know, I had a chance to take a look. I actually remember this. I was solicitor at the time. Uh, there was a public hearing on this before. Uh, there was a public hearing on this before.
It was.
And, and this was denied.
It was.
By the town council. It was, took two hearings, took two council meetings to get to that point uh, on it. And, you know, time has marched on on this. So you've got a difficult situation because you have abutting property on this to either side. But you also have two owners at the uh, end of the dead end that apparently uh, have use for this. And that was what carried the day back in two thousand.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Now, if anyone's against this, you're gonna have your opportunity to talk, but not now. Right now, we're gonna wrap up the people who are requesting this abandonment. So if you're in favor of this, please come forward. Alright, so no one is in favor of this. So, everybody who's against the abandonment.
Fire and police chief.
I have his book.
Yeah.
You wanna do them after these people?
Yeah, cuz that's gonna be the final, that's gonna, we're gonna be deciding. So, everyone who's against this abandonment, please come forward. We're gonna stay, no, 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 one at a time, one at a time. Come down to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we're Nancy and David Dutra. We're the ones that have the lot that abuts thirteen D one twenty-nine. Um, we were here twenty-five years ago for the same situation. Apparently, this is the most popular paper street in town. Um, so. Uh, what he's requesting is, we went over to the water department and Colin told us that he wanted to connect his water, cuz he has a well, to Homestead.
Who's Colin?
Colin from the Bristol County Water Department. He's the engineering project manager. Okay, and he told us that he could not connect the water supply via the paper street to Homestead Ave. He would have to pay out of pocket for the town to run a connection two hundred feet in from Patterson to his house at a cost of three hundred and fifty dollars a foot out of his pocket.
Okay.
So that eliminates that. That was the main reason why he wants the lot abandoned. Um.
Wait a minute, I'm confused. Who's Colin? And he lives there?
No, 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 no. We talked to him at the water department. It's the project.
Why does he have to pay?
No, no, no. Mr. Goff would have to pay.
I don't think Mr. Goff brought that up.
It was line one of the petition.
I'm allowing them to give the opportunity to speak in a, in a, in a manner that I can understand, so.
Okay, so it was line one.
Speak for yourself.
He wanted to have water connected to his property.
No, no, I mean, you speak for yourself. Mr. Goff speaks for himself.
Okay, so anyway, um, I talked to my other neighbor, who's the other abutter on the Fifth Street. She's lot thirteen D one nineteen. And she also agrees that she does not want the paper street abandoned. So we both agree on that. Her name is Trudy Foster and her husband. And uh, so anyway, Sixth Street had become a dumping ground for the O'Briens from Forty Patterson Ave and a driveway for their RV. The RV was actually parked there for nine months straight. It did not move. Mr. O'Brien told me they would only have it there for a few weeks before they would take it out and go on vacation. And we agreed, say, you know, it's no problem. It stayed there for nine months. So this is our backyard. This is what we see. This is our quality of life. They don't see it because they're on Patterson. We're on Lincoln and our whole lot abuts that paper road. So, um, as far as the dumping, I have pictures if anybody would like to see them.
Can we limit the back and forth, please? I understand this is very contentious.
I got it, Derek. Okay, so that is what he referred to as the debris that came from the law. Right, that's debris that came from the law.
That's coming from his yard.
Okay, it looks like leaves and sticks.
Yep.
I can't tell whether it came from.
Right.
I know, but it, it's not trash.
No, you never said it was trash.
I'm not saying anyone said it's trash. I'm saying I see leaves and sticks and it could be from that property. It could not be. I understand.
This is also Mr. O'Brien dumping.
Okay. And they, they've admitted to what you're showing me the pictures of.
Yeah, but I just wanted to show the pictures.
I know, but I, I heard them say that they dumped the leaves and sticks there.
And as far as.
Alright.
You'll have me, everybody will have that chance.
Did you wanna say so?
No.
Okay. So anyway, as um, we'd like to do, as in the first hearing in the year two thousand, I would like to quote what a lawyer's letter over the same situation with the town council decision was then, quote, "The town council is not inclined to take anything away from anyone. To abandon would take away something. To let it stand causes no harm," end quote. Like I said, this is a quality of life issue for us. This is our backyard. This is what we walk into every day. And we maintain for thirty-five years.
Right, but if I can, just remember, it's not your backyard. It may have abut your backyard. But it's not your backyard.
But this is what we.
I understand that, but I'm just, I wanna make language changes here.
Yep.
Cuz you may feel it is. It abuts your backyard.
Correct.
And I know that may sound uh, like I'm being picky, but it's legal. So.
Alright, that's all we have to say.
Okay, and Mr. Foster, I think you were next. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Kevin, what happened?
I'm okay, I.
It's not like I'm saying hello to my neighbors. Not here to cause any trouble with any of them, but I disagree with it.
Can you?
Yeah, I disagree with it. I'd like for it to stay the same way it has been.
I disagree with the positions. So introduce yourself for the record, please.
Kevin Foster. I own lot one nineteen.
Thank you. And now you can.
And I'm also in the future, which I've checked with the zoning board. I would consider doing a U, um, ADU in that area, the backside of my lot. Which then at that time I might need access, which is granted to all of us if it stays the same way. So that's pretty much my only problem with it. I have no complaints. We're neither neighbors, so you all know. Other than that, Joe, just, it should stay the way. It's, I don't think it's right that the town could come and sell that lot between us like that when, you know, we all been there.
It was just a question to the solicitor.
That was my.
I feel the same way. Not leave it the way it's been. Everybody's been participating and cleaning it up. We all cut through there. We all whatever. I agree, the science, you can't get as little train through was just cute, um, the neighbor. That, I like it the way it's been.
Thank you.
Everybody's happy that way.
Glad you're doing well, my friend.
I didn't know you were broken up.
Yeah, I've been a little bit.
What's the rego?
Quick question. At this point, there is, they don't want it abandoned. Mr. Goff doesn't have the right to the abandonment. Why do we, what do we?
Why am I keeping the hearing? Because uh, twenty years ago, twenty-three years ago, this uh, reared its head and I'm hoping that maybe the people's opinions can come out in public and uh, clear the air and maybe have a better sense of where everybody sits.
So twenty-five years ago, I was here and it was a different situation. It had to do with uh, it was a two-family house and they wanted extra land. Tony, where has time gone? Twenty-five years, but, but it was a totally different history than we have today.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Come on down. Hi.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. President, council members. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Danielle Emmons.
I'm Jordan.
Jordan Emmons. We live on eight Sixth Street. We are the only home on Sixth Street. So that is lot.
One twenty-four.
One twenty-four. So as the only home on Sixth Street leading into this area, we would like this street to remain as is and open to the public. We also do not want it abandoned. On a street with limited parking and an extreme hill down to the water, we would like this preserved for safety for the kiddos that run through those uh, uh, neighborhoods and for good neighborly friendship with our community. Um, we do agree that maybe removing those dumping signs would make it much uh, sort of nicer. Uh, so those did just go up and all of a sudden, all of us are looking at signs that say no dumping and it doesn't feel very neighbor.
That's an easy part of it.
Yeah, so that's our two cents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else with an opinion on this? Alright, I'd like to hear from the fire chief and the police chief. And your advice, of course.
Good evening, Chief Sizer. I have been, I was approached by Mr. Goff regarding it. He is correct. We would not use that Six Three as a primary uh, access or fire or EMS, as he mentioned, for rescue. We would stick to Patterson. Um, but in any case, anytime we have another um, option we may need that could be used as an alternative for, for the water supply.
Evening, Chief.
Good evening. I echo, I echo uh, the fire chief's uh, requests. Same here.
Okay. Thank you.
We have smaller vehicles and a fire truck.
Mr. Hanley.
I wanna make a comment and actually get it into the public record.
Please, that's why I'm continuing.
Uh, unfortunately, we can't regulate neighborly behavior from behind this rostrum. Uh, but what I think might be a solution when we get out of the public hearing is maybe if we address parking on this particular street, limit it to fifteen minutes or a permit, say somebody's gonna get a truck in there to unload some junk. If they get a permit from the police department for ten hours, twelve hours, twenty-four hours, then they'll be allowed to do it. That way, we won't have anybody calling and complaining if somebody parks there to run in and get groceries. Uh, obviously, you're not gonna be able to park a trailer or a, a, an RV there because that's a, a public street. And if you park it, park it there, it blocks the whole street. So maybe we can regulate, get rid of some of this problem by imposing parking requirements on that street. Fifteen-minute parking, uh, except by permit from the police department in the event you need to get, you know, the roof is gonna get in there and unload. You can get a permit from the police department for six, eight, ten, twelve, twenty-four hours, whatever the police chief deems appropriate.
Let's hold it there. Mr. DeSisto, is that option viable?
It is, yes.
Okay, future date. Uh, I didn't wanna stop you completely. I just meant that point.
I mean, in that way there, cuz I mean, they, they, the, the, our two chiefs said it's not performing any use. But obviously, it's performing use for the other two people who actually use it for access, not for their main access. But for when they need access, they have access to their property. So it still does serve a function for some of the people in town, you know?
Did you mean it doesn't serve a purpose for your use at this time? I mean, the abandonment?
That's correct. We would not use it as a primary approach for.
Okay, so you were just referring specifically to Mr. Goff saying that as an abandonment, that would be the best access to his property. You disagree. Remember when he said that's how you would get the rest of his spot to his property? That's what you're disagreeing, but okay.
That's pretty much it.
Mr. Trombley.
Yes. Um, it's pretty clear that this is really about a dispute between neighbors, like Mr. Hanley said, and that can be handled in other matters. And I will note that in Mr. Goff's letter, he did mention that when he bought the vacant parcel on Forty-Six Patterson, um, the contractors used Sixth Street as an access point. And then also, I think the O'Briens mentioned that they, you know, use that street to access the back of there cuz they do front onto Patterson, but they do use that as a pri- I don't know if they use it as a primary, but they use it as some sort of access to them. So if this were to be abandoned, in my opinion, it would, based on the law, it would go to the uh, the abutters on the side that faces Ho- uh, not Homestead, excuse me, but Laurel Park, which is where I grew up. I know this area very well. I know how contentious this can be and I know that the neighbors have, over the generations, put in a lot of work to maintain the friendliness and the, you know, the uh, the spirit of neighborliness in caring for uh, this, this parcel. I, I don't, and I think also, um, Mr. Foster brought up that he, if he wants to construct an ADU that uh, he would be using in the same way that Mr. Goff used the Sixth Street uh, access point um, to bring in contractors in construction. So it does feel, seem to me that even though the police and fire might not use this as a uh, primary street, that it is used by those for abutters, let's say. So I, I don't think that this abandonment should go forward and I don't think at this time that is what any of the neighbors want, unless I'm misunderstanding. So I think that we should vote to reject this.
Okay, just to be clear, these neighbors want it, those neighbors don't.
I thought they changed their mind.
Mr. Goff wants, or Mr. Goff doesn't want it anymore.
Nobody wants.
No. Um, okay, so uh, we've heard everything from the public, we've heard everything from the council, Mr. Rego.
I just wanna say one thing and, and I know where John's coming from, but I would rather us wait on putting signs and putting times and all of that. See if the neighbors can get along, maybe have a picnic. And if that doesn't work, come back to us. I'd hate to put signs in. Cuz what's gonna happen if you put a fifteen-minute there? You're gonna call the police. That guy's been, it's, it's never gonna end. So I would say at this point that we, we um, deny the petitioner and let's wait to see. I, I'm, you, you people all seem nice. I think they're all gonna get along. They're really good.
Let me uh, Mr. Wheeler, hold on, please. Mr. Wheeler, if you could relocate the sign, one sign, simply stating the town law that there's no dumping on townland. Thank you.
Put it off to the side so they can actually get up, up and down.
Mr. Goff, you had something you wanted to say?
I was just gonna say, could you ask the Public Works Department to remove?
That's what I just did.
Yes, I know. This was before that. Remove all four signs or just leave the one.
I just did that.
The woods, but turn it around so that it faces the public street.
I just did that. He, the reason he put them up the way he did.
Yeah.
There's no one in that whole area could say they're not seeing him.
I totally understand.
Everybody, take a look, see him, they're here.
If it's just one sign, they can just. And then you get, the Public Works Department gets three signs to reuse someplace else.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, alright, this is a public hearing and we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to reject the abandonment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. You have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
No, you don't.
No, really, you don't. Uh, next, we have public hearing for renewal of the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six alcohol and beverage license. Mr. DeSisto, I can go by class or do I have to read each name?
No, you can go by class.
Thank you. Class A, limit three. Is there a motion?
Motion.
To approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Class B V L, limit seven. Is there a motion to approve?
I, I would like to make a motion. I have a list from the clerks. There are some that we have to hold back until we get the proper.
Make a contingent on the paperwork.
Correct, but it's.
At the end of the month.
Correct, but it's only a seal. I got them all marked off.
Okay.
Where the hell did I mark them?
Actually, what we can do, Mr. DeSisto, is we can make a motion as we go along, contingent on all of the paperwork being sufficiently brought into the clerk's office by the end of the month, correct?
Correct. If there's an objection as to any license, however, any member of the coun- council can sit before the batch board is taken.
So the motion will be contingent on all paperwork being submitted to the clerk's office by the end of November. And that's the class B V L, limit seven.
I'll make a motion. We approve contingent on satisfying the clerk's requirements for renewal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Class B V, limit thirty-two.
I'll make a motion. We approve the thirty-two licenses pending the applicant providing the proper documentation to the town clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Class C, limit one.
I'll make a motion. We approve, uh, Jack's Bar Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Class D, limit five.
I will make a motion. We approve all five pending uh, completed documentation with the town clerk.
There's only four, four of them.
All four.
There's limit five.
Five, but we only have four.
Well, okay.
All four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have requests. Uh, oh, next we have petitions, uh, P one.
We did those.
We did that. That's a consent agenda. Thank you. We did that, that's a consent agenda, thank you. It's cluttered up, yeah.
It still jumps to P ten.
Next, we're going to jump to P ten.
We're gonna do the B V L first, don't we? Why does this sound confusing?
What the heck's going on? I'm confused over here.
Wait a minute. On page five. We've got the petitions of P one is the uh, victualling. They go all the way to
Okay.
P ten. Which is on page nine. So that's it, we're done.
Well, we're gonna, these, we just did the liquor licenses, now we've gotta do the victualling licenses?
No, they were, they were the, those were the uh, consent. Aren't they?
Yeah, oh, okay, all right, great, I got you, all right.
We've made things more streamlined.
Still seeing double.
Yeah, so we're good. So now we have a request for outdoor seating from Club Recreative Cultural, De Warren. Sandra Madeira, so you hear Sandra. Hi, uh, what would you like to do, other than sit through the whole meeting?
The um, zoning board, we would like to do some outdoor dining and, you know, alcohol.
Okay, and have you uh, spoken to the police chief and fire chief?
I've spoken to the fire chief.
Any objections?
I will, I set my setup in this place.
So passage contingent on your approval?
Yes.
Both? Uh, so do you know what that means? We're gonna pass the license.
Okay.
And then you're gonna work with, actually, we're gonna, we're gonna pass the license, but it won't be granted until you work with the police chief and fire chief and come into compliance with what they want.
Right.
And what you want, and then you come in and pick up your license.
We had talked about putting some planters up and stuff, so we
All of that with them. Already going in front of the zoning board, so you're on your right, on the right way. Uh, motion to approve, and is there a second?
Uh, is that a third contingent on?
What's it say, a game machine on the application?
Uh, that's for the class D.
All right, so it's one application for all three licenses, okay.
Um.
Mr. President, is that contingent upon uh, the approval of the motion?
Yes.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Do I need to stay for number eleven?
Might as well. Uh, now we have a request for New Year's ex- New Year's Eve extended hours. Entertainment and alcohol to end at twelve forty-five, closed by two AM. Um, police chief? Fire chief?
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice. All right, I think that's it for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, did I see the pod snap here earlier?
In the back.
Come on up. I should say, wake up, come on up. How are you? There you go. Your arms are killing you.
Look.
Through thirty hours in the last five days and played five shows.
All right, stick to the agenda. Good to see you.
You too.
Uh, you are requesting for a New Year's Eve extended hours, entertainment and alcohol to end at twelve forty-five. You've done this before, closed by two AM. Any objections? Any questions of the uh?
Make a motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
See that quickly walk up here. Next, we have a request for yearly entertainment license, Fairy T LLC. This is the Fairy Tea Room, Sarah Beth, uh, Warner, sixty-nine Marcus Street, are you here? Hello?
So I'm gonna refuse myself, she's in a brother mine.
Okay. How are you? So you're uh, back?
We're back.
And you're asking for an entertainment license?
Yes.
Same as what you said a month ago or two, whenever it was there? This is taking you into the next year.
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Just that this is all indoor music, correct?
Yes, it would be um, nominal acoustic.
Wonderful.
For events and private events only.
You haven't had anything from last month?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have a victualling license, Tracy Woodward. Perfect Sweet Shop, is Tracy here? Hi, Tracy. Sorry, we have to keep you here all night, everybody. Maybe we should, Anthony, would there be a streamlined approach to this? I mean, to like all of these applicants, cuz it seems like we, we got rid of uh, you know, all of those victualling licenses of alcohol pretty quickly, and yet we make people, like these last three people sit here all night, asking for something that you think that could happen in the future?
No. No, because it's new.
All right, no, they're not new. Oh, it's a new location?
Yeah.
Same face, new address. Okay, so.
Number four at this point.
There you go. Glad we figured that out. Uh,
Wait, how is this new? The Perfect Sweet Shop is?
So the Perfect Sweet Shop itself is still going to be the um, the kitchen. It's still going to be at sixteen Joyce Street.
Yeah.
And what I'm um, trying to do is get um, the front of house, so the, the bakery, like the um, the storefront.
Yeah.
At four thirty-six Main Street, um, so that people can see it, cuz no one ever can find it.
I never knew you were back there, I grew up, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, I've been there seven years as of yesterday, and um, and people still say every day, I didn't know you were there, so.
Where's four thirty-six Main Street?
Four thirty-six is Bevy, where Bevy's was.
Okay, not where the pizza place was, next door.
Um, so
No, Bevy's is the corner of Child.
The other, the other corner, so the uh, uh, the, it used to be Warren House Pizza was um, on the, where the alleyway met.
Right, 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 right.
So this is on the opposite, the corner that goes Main Street and um,
Child?
Child, which is next to my crepe shop.
Okay, all right.
So like, my crepe shop is at four thirty-eight, and this is at four thirty-six, so they'll actually share a wall, which is another thing we're um, proposing uh, a permit to, not right now.
Yeah, nice.
Make a motion to approve.
There you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you're gonna have free on Main Street?
Yeah.
Monopoly, I, I, well, just, just trying to, just trying to.
But they're all different, so.
Yeah, they're all different, just trying to.
God bless you.
Thank you.
So, you're all set. Next, we have Nathan Cooperman, is Nathan here?
How are you?
Good, so you are coming in, uh, we're gonna use the previous person, so everyone will know. You're going where Federico Pizza was.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and you are Spaghetti Lane via Porta?
That's correct, yes.
And uh, you're Michael's son.
That's correct, yep, he's my stepfather. Good to see you as well.
Any questions of the applicant?
This is not, um, there's gonna be two spaghetti places now in town, right?
Uh, where, this is gonna be pizza, and then his mom and Mike Sanangelo are gonna be over at the Old Greeks place.
So you're San Angelo?
Uh, uh, not by blood, but it's my, my stepfather.
Yeah, okay, and, and please let them know because there's some confusion about what the menu is proposed to be.
Well, this, so this menu will be supposed to be pizza and sandwiches, so a little different than Spaghetti Lane that we have.
Not confused.
There'll be a little competition there? There'll be a little competition there? Hope so.
Yeah, we'll see.
Family competition.
Family competition.
Make a motion to approve.
And it's gonna be an approval again, contingent, cuz I'm sure you're getting your inspections now.
Yes.
Those will be contingent on the fire inspection?
Yeah.
And uh, is there a second?
And when would you, would you? I, I should have asked Tracy, when do you anticipate getting open?
Probably not till around January.
Okay.
And Ms. Cronin is uh, big with Discover Warren. So you can be a part of that if you want, and she'll, she'll come in and I'll come in and we'll have to eat your pizza.
Please, please do.
There's no choice.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so there's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, I'll see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have all business, discussion in action regarding request from the Bristol Warren Regional School District to waive building permit fees for the work being performed at the Kickhamute Middle School and Hugh Cole Elementary School under Rhode Island General Law twenty-three, twenty-seven point three, one nineteen, continued from October meeting. Oh, hi. I might have missed correspondence, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you did, I told you. I did wanna pull two, but we can go back to it.
Stay there. Uh, so, um, you wanna do what? Pull what?
Uh, C two and C three, but we can go back to it, it's okay.
We will, I just wanted to know what you might suppose. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
So we have numbers in our packet.
Yes.
And we got emails, uh, did everybody get the email? Or any uh, electronic information that was sent to the clerk's office?
I think we have a hard copy here now.
Well, I just wanna make sure, either way, uh,
Thank you.
We have the super with us.
We do, thank you for having me.
Wanna start right off? You can go ahead.
You got it. Uh, thank you for um, letting us come back and just go through this with a little bit more information. Um, so what we are requesting is the uh, waiver of the Warren permit fees. Uh, we have done a similar process with Bristol. They did approve the waiver of our fees, fees on the Bristol side. Uh, you'll see on the cost list, the Warren permit fees are about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Hundred fifty-nine, a hundred and one, and a hundred and one dollars. Um, so we're hoping to waive that. Otherwise, it will just roll into the bond. It'll be above our cap, so that'll be a full payment. You can see um, with the interest, we'd almost be doubling what you'd be paying. So it makes sense, I think, to uh, to waive the fee.
Just have one question, the state portion of you, that you will pay that, right?
The state portion is paid for by our contractor. It's only about three thousand dollars, though, it's not. Most of the fees come from the towns.
But actually, as we spoke, what we would like to do is, uh, did you follow up on any of that?
Yeah, so it looks like historically, they've never waived any fees.
Fill in the blanks, say.
Sorry.
What we're talking about is seeing if there was an opportunity to ask the state to waive theirs, because the same logic applies. Plus, we're borrowing the money from the state, so.
And they're repaying hopefully eighty percent of it, so.
You know, so it's an interesting, but.
It's a, it is a small, it's a very small portion.
The research goes us that the state never.
Has traditionally never waived the fee for anyone. I did look up what it would be, it's about three thousand for the Warren projects, so. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
I wanna make a motion to approve this.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I told you you could come a little later in the night, so I saw you come in at six thirty.
Well, you said seven, so.
Well, I said, you know, I guarantee you won't be on by seven.
Understand your timeframe, I'll know.
I'm always late. Thank you. Next, we have the uh, correspondence, and we wanna pull what one, department head reports?
Yeah, the two, it, it's just a general, I just wanted to thank all the department heads for doing an amazing job with these reports, uh. I read through them, I know other people read through them and uh, doing a good job with them. And then on the resignation letter, I just wanted to send a letter of thank you to Jenny Lefur and uh, love and appreciation.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Next, new business, discussion in action regarding request for bid proposals uh, for the repair, replace, or removal of the cement bleachers at Burso Park. Mr. Desisto, can you explain why and where this came from?
The uh, town manager, uh, actually, I, I, the, the first time I went down for a visit, uh, I believe it was in August to September, uh, uh, at Burris Hill Park uh, for the tree project, uh, took a look at the bleachers, a little concerned about their condition. Uh, we contacted the trust and asked them to come down, take a look to see, uh, gives a, an assessment of liability. And that was a, a negative assessment uh, for it. And so for liability purposes, my recommendation is, is that uh, uh, the uh, bleachers either be repaired or removed, but the concurrent condition is not um, not something that is acceptable from a risk management standpoint. Something needs to be done, particularly since so many children uh, utilize Burris Hill Park. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Rego.
Um, so i- it's funny, I, I, I went down there the other day, oh, probably a couple months ago, and I noticed that that was donated to us by a Mr. Martins, I forget his first name, a hundred years ago.
Joseph Martin Trust.
Martin Trust, yeah. So my question to you, is there anything that, that prohibits us from knocking it down or doing whatever we need to do because it was donated to the town a hundred years ago?
No.
Okay. Mr. Wheeler, will you be able to go out to bid?
Yes.
Um, and we've gotten a few estimates to kind of structure our, the, to know where we're
If so, one of the bids is complete, I'm just, I'm obviously working on the second one now, which would be the repairing of the um, bleachers, and then I'll put it out at the same time after review from the solicitor, make sure everything lines up correctly.
So we're looking at around fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars to demolish them. Partial removal with uh, help possibly from DPW using uh, the demolished concrete as fill for the slope. And then we've had a few uh, discussion estimates coming in at about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand for repair or replace, and if we uh, repair or replace them, we are now going to have to do the safety standards, is that correct, Mr. Cabral? So it's, it, you're nodding yes, but for the record, it's, thank you. So, um, Mr. Rego.
Are we going out for a proposal, or we're going out for bid?
However it's worded, I'm, I don't know how it was worded, I've just, I put all the paperwork together for a bid process right now.
So, um, so.
Mr. Desisto, is there a difference?
Yeah, it should be request or proposals.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, I'm not looking for bids at this point, I wanna see more or less.
Yeah, so we should decide if we're gonna take it down or.
Right, right. And the second part, I know we have, and I think this is together because it's part of Burris Hill and the Town Beach, the seawall. Can that be incorporated with this RFP or?
No.
Yeah.
Two separate issues.
Yeah, I believe Tara's gonna be incorporated. But I believe Tara was already.
Well, I know.
Well, I'm saying it.
I mean, yes, I guess you could.
The same kinda work, we may get, if we put them both together, we may get a better price if he's already there for setup instead of setting up twice.
If you think it, I guess it could be done.
But I, I.
But one demolition, potential, I mean, we're looking at roughly about a two hundred thousand dollar difference. We've, we haven't, in order to structure, in order to understand what we were looking at, we spoke into a few people. And they've come up with some numbers, and of course, they're not on paper yet.
Right.
But they're giving us the ballpark uh, discussion of getting rid of is gonna be a lot cheaper than rebuilding. But nothing you said is uh, incorrect.
I would say I agree with the council president that it should be a standalone item, though, just because we wanna have an accurate assessment of how much this is going to cost, whereas when you bundle things, then it becomes a question of, okay, what's, what does this part make up of that bid versus what the other part makes up. So I, I think that that rationale makes sense, although I do see the wisdom in combining them, I, I think that for uh, purposes of financial accountability that uh, we should go with the council president's suggestion.
If you're going off a proposal, you can do it that way, and then we'll also bid, then you put them together if you want.
Itemize.
Yeah.
I wanna itemize.
Somebody make a motion? Stanley?
Uh, okay. I will make a motion that we uh, but the, I guess it's gonna be the DPW director that's gonna go up for RFPs.
In coordination, probably.
Coordination with the solicitor and the town manager, that we, they go off RFPs for replace, repair or remove the cement bleachers at Burris Hill Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have new business, two, discussion in action regarding the following budget process, Mr. Rego.
So is it possible that we can move this when, when we talk the, about the finance director? Can we move it to the finance director's spot? That way we'll incorporate everything together? Is that possible?
Do you wanna move all of them? All of NB two?
It's only three things there.
Sure. Watch what else we can do. Bring up the town manager now. Town manager, come on up.
So I made that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Well, we don't have to. I mean, we're just going to move the agenda.
Oh, no, we have.
I don't think it.
Okay, we have to, we have to. There's a motion to move Mister Sullivan, the town manager, up on the agenda. Is there?
Actually, the motion is to move Mister Rego's request.
Down?
With the fin, with the town finance director.
I was just taking care of what was in between, so.
Well, I think. The town solicitor's in between.
Please make the motion.
I'll make a motion. We move Mister Rego's NB two to the, follow the. Proceed the finance director FY twenty-five, twenty-six revenues and expenditures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mister Manager, you're up.
Thank you.
Discussion in action regarding the town council directives to the town manager.
Thanks, Mister President. This is a request from Councilman Rego concerning. Directives that were given to me since December to address. And I, I put together some responses for the Mister Rego and the council.
So Brian, if it's okay, number one, it's been completed, so we can call that completed. Number two has been completed, so I'm satisfied with that. The third one, about the Army Corv engineer, I know we're waiting for that, I'm good with that. On the lampposts. The repair of the lamppost, which was a directive that was done a year ago today, well, on the fourteenth. What's the status on that?
So we, I've reached out to Mister O'Brien, who is the individual who has installed those. Is when they were installed in the town. He has agreed to have a meeting with myself, the public works director, and come up with a plan on. How to address the lampposts, what would be the best course of action to addressing those.
And how soon do you think we can have a meeting?
We reached out to him. Yeah. One of the issues that is that I understand that it was a father and son business many years ago. And I believe the father passed away. The son does it part-time. He doesn't do it full-time. He has a full-time job with Electric Boat, from what I understand, so.
So the next one is on the, the weed issue. I went on vacation, I came back. Downtown looked great, but I'm still concerned about Child Street and Marcus Street and Medicum Avenue. Do we have a game plan? Or?
Well, we, we have discussed the, the overtime issue that would cost about. If we did this every three weeks, is that, is that the directive that you?
Well, if, if you need to do it on overtime, that's fine, but getting it done.
Are we talking about the state roads?
Yeah.
So we're going to maintain the state roads? We're arguing that the state. On the state roads.
We've had this discussion.
I know.
We've had this discussion and, and we've always maintained those roads. And they've never been in the condition they are now. When I drive down Child Street, all I can think of is all those years and all the effort we made to get those roads. Redone, and now the weeds are breaking up the cement. And it doesn't take much to have that done. It makes all the difference in the world. And I thought a couple of months ago, we agreed that that's the direction we were going to go, that we were going to take care of the weeding.
I thought you were petitioning the state for them to do it.
No, we've already went down that road. And it's not going to get done.
Well, I guess they're working.
I mean, we did, we did Main Street, that's a state road. Why wouldn't we do Child Street? It's, and it's not like it's a big, a big item. In one day, in four hours, they could do Child Street, just like they did Main Street. It doesn't take much effort for them to do it. It's just got to get done.
Mister, Mister Wheeler, please.
It takes three or four days to do the entire town. So that now neglects us from doing any of the town roads. There's the cost that is associated with the overtime, there's also the costs associated with the chemicals that we use to do this. So there's a lot of time, money, that's all being spent on this. It's not as easy as just get out there and do it. Because it's pushing, pushing other work that's supposed to be done on town roads. So if we're doing state problems, we're not fixing town problems.
You know what? I'm not going to, I'm not going to accept that. We did a wonderful job. We've always done it all these years. And all of a sudden, we stopped doing them. And these, these sidewalks, they're all going to break up. And you know what? We're going to get stuck having to fix them again. It doesn't take much effort. It doesn't take as much money as you're talking about. You've been doing it with overtime, you, you can continue to do it.
It can be a third of our overtime cost.
We had given a directive to have it done. It needs to be done.
Okay, why don't we take a look at what you can do? And we'll see what you can do and we'll see if that can go into effect. We're kind of changing the, the seasons right now.
Yes.
So maybe it would be best if we could look at a spring plan. And not ignore what Mister Rego is bringing up now, but kind of look at a fall detail.
Yes, I, I agree. We've fallen behind and. I'll take the blame for not having a plan in place. I understood it was for, the directive was to come up with a, a cost analysis of how much it would cost.
Referring to a fall as in the season.
Sullivan, I believe he's referring to the fact that there's no vegetation in the winter.
Oh, yes, I know that, yeah. No, I agree with that. But there is still vegetation there, but.
Thank you.
It can be cleaned up.
It needs to be done. I mean, it's not right that we're doing. We're doing.
Gentlemen, please. He hears us. Let's not badger him.
I'm not badgering. I'm asking for something to be done that I've been asking for a couple of months to be done, and I don't feel that's badgering. We're giving a directive.
Right, so.
And we've heard all the excuses already, Joe.
But Mister Rayo, to continue on it, right now, we can't do it tonight. We're not going to actually do it. So we're going to ask him, right? You're asking him for a plan.
No, 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 no. We gave this directive in July to take care of these.
Okay, what do you, what do you, what do you want to get out of tonight's meeting?
I want to make sure that these things are done. We need to address L Street, we need to address Medicum Avenue, and we need to address Marcus Street. I mean, we addressed the downtown area.
So what I was, so what I was saying is it's fall, so why don't we look at the fall part of the cleanup? Weeds aren't growing right now.
They're still there, though, Joe. It looks ugly. They're breaking up the sidewalk.
I understand. I'm trying to move this in a positive.
And I am too. And I'm here to get things done.
Okay, so.
And you know what? There's no reason why it should have taken this long. They did the other roads, using overtime, let them work four hours at night or whenever they can, or do it during the day. But it needs to get done. I don't want to see them anymore.
Tell them what you're, what you're.
I think you know what I expect. I, I expect these weeds to get cleaned. Now, if you can't do it during, during the day, then do it with overtime. You were doing four hours once a week, and I saw, I saw a great improvement in the town downtown. We did a lot of compliments. But why can't we continue to do it?
Where are we going to get the money from?
Right, right now, as they're setting up the holiday lights. They're, 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 they're doing their job as best they can. We can have them work on the weeds in, in, in a format that they could plug in.
So they have had a format. They've been, they've been doing, once a week, they were doing it. They did the downtown, they, they did Main Street. Now, why can't we continue that once a week for four hours?
What do you want to happen right now, tonight, other than saying to them, please do the weeds? I'm, I'm.
Exactly that. I think you know that, right?
All right, move on to the next thing then.
All right, so we're going to do the weeds. We're going to take care of the weeds.
Where are we going to pay for it?
Overtime budget. Look at the budget. There's money in the overtime. We also, we also put in part-time help. So the money's there.
We also haven't even started.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
The money's there.
Mister Rego has his, what he wants to bring up this evening from issues he's brought up.
So discussion and action manager to put in place employee annual performance review. What's the status on that, Brian?
So Pauline and I have been looking at other organizations, other communities that have. Performance evaluations. We're still evaluating them as to far as. Will that work here in Warren? Because we want to make sure that when we do it, we do it right, it's done correctly. Because if it is not done correctly, it can be, have some adverse effects.
One question. Mister Rego, did the council vote on having a employee evaluation put into place?
Yeah, we did on eight twelve.
We did. The council voted on an employee evaluation.
Yeah.
Or the development.
Yes.
I think we, I think we, I don't know if we, I think we, we voted on having him look into it.
Right, we've never seen one or implemented one.
So Brian, doesn't the police department in Warren have a, an annual performance review?
They do.
So is there a reason why we can't, that's something that.
Well, that would be apples and oranges. If you, you take the public works department and. And the, the police department has certain standards and that they have to abide by, that's part of their evaluation. I don't think that would work with public works department or tax exer's office or finance office.
Other clerks.
Public works.
Other clerks.
Other clerks, I'm sorry.
Again, I, I don't think it's.
Or the building official.
I don't think it's that difficult of a thing to do, but, all right, so it's work in progress, right?
Yes.
And then as far as the time management machine?
Yes, so we've spoken to Paycheck. Paycheck has informed us that. It would be an additional, probably about twenty-eight hundred dollars a year fee. For us to implement a. Papalist time system. Plus, there's a, a one-time programming and training fee of about two thousand dollars. Get that done.
So at what point are we on that? Is that something you're going to come back to the council and talk about, or?
Well, we have to find the money first to be able to do that.
Wouldn't that be a good budget?
It could be a good budget. Add, add that to our budget and, and it started in, in July. At, at the beginning of the fiscal year. To give us some time to get everybody up to speed on, on how that works.
Okay, you know, can we send this to the budget committee so that they can discuss it and maybe find out where we could get the resources for those funds? Sooner than that? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, good. The next one we're going to discuss tonight, it wasn't really. Directed to you, but we're going to discuss it tonight, and that's the budget process. Number nine, discussion action following list of. Rhode Island Department of Transportation, that's town warrant properties for the state road, maintenance, upkeep, safety improvements. And this was. We talked about this before, Brian, and that was the cross rocks, cross walk at cross, cross road. Restaurant in Market Street Pub. And you had mentioned that they had approved that, or?
That has been approved by the State Traffic Commission. I don't know what the schedule is for when that will be implemented, but it has been approved. That, and if you recall, that was also the removal of the crosswalk at Jamil's Park, right there in there, JJ's.
Correct.
Right on the corner.
Repair and paint the, the traffic light on Main Street. Did you?
I'm sorry?
Repairing and painting the, the traffic light on Main Street, that was.
Yes, that was referred to the maintenance division of Rhode Island DOT by the State Traffic Commission. When I sent them a letter back in July.
Back to clean state sidewalks.
I remember after a car accident, that broke that, the, believe it or not. The, the base, the company doesn't exist anymore that made those.
That doesn't mean that the, the, the whole thing can't be painted. It's all rusty and looks like a. The next one, ten, that's a duplicate. Letter from the State or Traffic Commission regarding town's request to stop sign up Burn Street. That one. You had responded four to ten thousand dollars. Is there, is there any special revenue funds from the police department that could be utilized for one of those signs?
But the state, the state objected to the stop sign.
No, it just said, it just said that it would cost between four to ten thousand dollars. Oh, it did not warrant. Okay, I'm sorry, complete.
Oh, discussion.
Oh, this next one is, this was. Derek, discussion in action requesting the Bristol Warren Regional District, but I think. You've worked on that. A discussion in action regarding replacing the repair of the sidewalks on Medicum Avenue, Kiki Mute Road, Marcus Street, which are not ADA compliant. And this one from, from Joki Pasquale. Well, that's when we talked about the repair.
I said, I wonder who that is, meaning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know who it came from. I think you called, and what was their answer?
I, I've sent a letter to the Director of the Department of Transportation, and a letter was also sent to all of our representatives and senators. I've also reached out to David Walsh, who was the. I guess you would say liaison for the communities, and he told me that he would look into this. I will follow up.
Yeah, if you could follow up and try to schedule a date, that would be great. Thank you, Brian, and I thank you for doing this. And, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort to put these things on the agenda. And when you don't see them go anywhere, sometimes it's frustrating. So I appreciate you doing this.
All right, Mister Rego, thank you. Now we're on number two.
Sorry, Mister President.
Dramatic pause. It's good. Everybody's.
Yeah, this is grants that we received from Rhode Island Housing. If you recall, back in July. We applied for three grants being funded directly, completely by Rhode Island Housing. And they will do three different projects. One project is to evaluate. Whether Mary V Quirk is suitable for. Am I on the right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I, I wasn't sure. Whether Mary V Quirk could be feasible for housing.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, yes, thank you. And so this, this project, we've done all by Weston and Sampson. They'll take care of everything. They'll be obviously giving reports to the town on this. But they, and then they will look at, you know, not only the, the structure and the, what's, what's in there. As far as hazardous and things like that, but also look at what, and where we could locate or relocate Poxon Recreation. And also the Head Start program. So it's not like they're just going to be left out.
Feasibility.
Yeah, correct.
Nice.
I don't ever remember talking or even thinking about even getting rid of Mary V Quirk School. That's why, that's why my mouth was hanging open. Feasibility for affordable housing. I don't ever remember even thinking about getting rid of Mary V Quirk School.
The state's sending out a grant.
Can I just ask for the.
I didn't ask for it.
Project schedule. The timeline goes from August of twenty-five through December of twenty-twenty-six. So this work is already commenced?
Well, the, the, the project timeline, August was when the pro, the requests or the proposals had to be submitted. And we were just notified that we received these three grants. So, and that the purpose for tonight is to. Get approval by the council and, and have them signed by the council to go forward.
Brian, there's no cost to the town for this, correct?
There is no cost to the town. This is being, all being paid for by Rhode Island Housing. And they will pay, work directly with Weston and Sampson, so. We don't even have to be the middle person. We'll just get the results.
Okay, next.
We need a motion to approve him to sign, for you to sign it, I believe, is what it's looking.
Well, I was thinking all three and then.
Okay.
We have people that want to speak.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
My name's Donna Raza, and I'm speaking as a citizen, not as an employee of Epcap, because I do work for Epcap. I saw this on the agenda, and I work in that office. I serve, I've been there with this program for thirty-two years. We serve, I was very glad to hear that. They'd look at where to relocate us. It's not as simple as that, because there's a lot of stipulations with licensing and relocating to buildings. I just want to point out, and again, this is my, Mia's a passionate person who works with young children. I was at a kids' count. Presentation today that was put on by different programs, one being Thrive by Five that I go facilitate. I want to point out how important this program is to the children in our community. We have one of the highest child abuse and neglect rates in the state. So the state average is ten point nine per thousand children. The four car cities have a fourteen point, I think, four. Child abuse and neglect rate. Warren has a fifteen point nine per thousand children. So these programs are meeting a need. And I really beg you all, and I don't know when this grant was proposed, it's above my pay grade, who was contacted. But please take into account the fact that these children need these programs. There are many people in our community who started out at Head Start and now are. Very successful because of the help that families and children get through these programs. And then also, as you all know, I've been on the rec board, I think, twenty-five years or so now. And the recreation department, that gym is used every single night. Tara has done a lot to get people into that building. So just, it really is important. I know that they're going to be looking at the feasibility. We need affordable housing. We all know that too, but we need a place for our children. And that's the rec department, and that's the Head Start program.
Right, so what we're trying to do is just get all potential options on the table. And if the one sixty-ninth ever comes up on Marcus Street. The possibility of having maybe the rescue there with a split use would always be good to look at. So when this grant. Uh so when this grant came in at no cost to the town, um. You know, we figure we take advantage of it.
Must be above my pay grade too, because there's no way in heck I would have ever approved the study to get rid of Mary V Quirk School. It's a great asset that the town has. And until, until something comes up and changes or we get another facility, I would never vote to get rid of Mary V Quirk School as what it's used for now.
Right, so having a feasibility would be a a great informational data to draw up.
So I just wanted to speak up for the children of Warren, because that's what I've done for my whole adult career. And again, I'm speaking as a community member.
That was part of the study, wh- what would happen, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Brian?
Brian, oh, I'm sorry.
So I have one question, so. Who, who initiated it? Who initiated uh asking if Mary V Quirk was feasible for?
I don't know.
In order to get a grant, you have to seek out the grant.
Ask Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Sullivan, do you know who asked for this grant?
Yeah, it was proposed to me from the Rhode Island Housing and was working with uh Weston and Sampson, we submitted the proposal.
I guess, I puzzled too, somebody had to initiate it, no?
By working with Rhode Island Housing put out these grants.
Mr. Sullivan, come, come to the microphone. Come to the microphone.
Rhode Island Housing put out these grant proposals, we submitted uh the proposal, all three proposals. They uh accepted them, and they sent this this to us now. For the Town Council to review and decide whether they want to go forward with this, these grants.
Did the council approve those proposals when you, when?
Not before I submitted them, no.
I mean, it's just informational, it's not binding, and it's not costing us anything, but I just. For a record, I'm not giving up Mary V Quirk unless. Something really drastically changes.
Brian, you just identified it, which to me, I don't see a problem with that either, so.
Any other question? Go ahead. Everything's good.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion at this time, Mr. President?
Well, I think.
Two more.
We have, yeah.
Oh, we're not, okay.
Just two more.
Go ahead.
Uh, the second one is um what is called a uh. T, it's it's TOD, but it is uh. Looking at. Transportation-oriented development. Uh which includes uh bus routes, um are are. His program, low income of the ability for housing. And uh to use that information to develop a uh transportation-oriented uh. Development in the air in Warren, and. Warren has been identified already as uh an area where we need housing, and we have some transportation issues, so. Uh again, this program, this grant is looking at that feasibility. Uh with uh Weston and Sampson would be doing a a program to look at. The uh proposal, and if uh. Or it was already accepted by the uh housing, Rhode Island Housing, and we'll get a report back on uh this program, the. Transportation-oriented development.
All right, so why don't we, for housekeeping purposes, uh is there a motion to accept the uh, to go up for the feasibility of the reuse? Mary V Quirk for affordable housing?
Motion.
Again, all in favor. Is there a motion to have the Council President sign the Transit-Oriented Development Study, Medicum Avenue?
Uh, motion.
Second.
All in favor.
There's no cost to that one, or is that?
No, these are, all of these grants are no cost to the town.
All right, so but the seventy-four thousand was for one, I couldn't find a cost for the other one. I mean, you say it's no cost for the town, but somebody's paying it, right?
Correct.
And where is the the second one coming from?
Second one, the Transit-Oriented Development? I believe that is.
The total?
Yeah, ninety-five thousand.
Got it?
That that's coming from Rhode Island Housing as well.
And I couldn't do this, and I couldn't find these things.
Next is the, uh so there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi, can I get that on?
Yes, please.
Just on Transit-Oriented Development, the markets and Medicum corridor, it's part of our uh comprehensive plan. It's part of the rezoning of that area, which we already uh induced to study to study the utilities that are in that area, so this is just the natural next step. Which would allow for rezoning of that area, so it totally makes sense.
And next we have the uh Municipal Technical Assistant Grant to update zoning and land use and permitting process.
And that one is eighty-nine thousand two sixty-seven. I'll make a motion we approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, now, number three, discussion in action and approval regarding a cloud-based maintenance management system for the wastewater treatment facility. I see. Mr. Camiga here, uh if you have anything to add, feel free to come up to the mic. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. President, uh Rhode Island DEM did a uh. An evaluation or inspection of the wastewater treatment plant, um and they. Identified four dif- four different issues that needed to be corrected. Uh, one of the issues uh that is most concerning is that the. That we have to have a maintenance uh software that tracks. Maintenance of thing uh important equipment at the facility. DEM comes in and requests, uh we pull those records so that they can see. Uh that we have the ability to go back and look and see when things have been repaired and what was repaired on those things. Uh when they came into the facility, they discovered that the maintenance records were on a uh. Hard uh computer, stand-up computer, that only one person had access to that uh computer. Uh, that person was not at the facility at the time because uh she was ill. Um, and we didn't have access or the facility didn't have access to those records.
Bring us into compliance with DEM's regulations?
It would.
And the cost for this is?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
Where would we be getting the money from?
Mister uh, De Sisto recommends that we pull this out of the uh our budget instead of. The uh sewer treatment facility, because it would be then the sewer treatment facility's property.
Wait a minute, I'm confused.
Tell them.
You got, you got, you got a private vendor in there operating?
Okay.
I I prefer it. If the town purchased it, so that the town owned it. If there were any issues, it would be town property.
Yeah, but we use sewer funds, still the town property.
To go through that budget. Question is, is is there's gonna be any, an ownership question? Well, if we pay for it, it's ours.
It's ours, yeah.
If they want to pay for it, they can have it.
Yeah, I I.
In other words, if we pay for it, it's ours and it can't be taken away, the sewer plant pays for it. It's a third party and it can be taken away in in legal argument.
Here's the thing, the money's coming from the same place, right?
Right, yes.
If it doesn't come through the budget for the sewer, there's gonna be no question that the town has ownership over it. That's my recommendation, if you don't want to do it, that's okay. That's the safer course of action. Where on our budget are we looking to take it from?
Five thousand dollars.
Out of the contingency fund?
Sure. I mean, out of, out of everything, we'll find five thousand.
Mr. President, I would suggest that we uh look at plant operations, take it out of the plant operations right now, pay for this.
We'll find the five thousand dollars, because if you remember, we.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have to have a specific place we're taking the money from right at this moment?
Is there a?
We have to also.
Jim, find out. He has a question or an answer.
I do appreciate uh, from the Budget Committee's perspective, we do appreciate um, you know, the five thousand dollar expense line. I see where the town manager and uh where Mr. Rego is coming from, I also see where the solicitor is coming from. Um but I do. Endorse uh Mr. Rego's approach that it come from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. As it relates to the solicitor's concern, I see your point, if you have the vendor. Make the procurement as that corporate entity, then that would become their asset, their intellectual property, whereas. At least in the federal space, we're effectively talking about government uh provided equipment, government furnished equipment. Something that could be purchased through the Enterprise Fund, which runs with the intent of setting up that fund, and where we want the. Sewer system to run, we effectively buy it. And those folks use that tool in the same way that they use the pumps and they use the other things and the trucks. That are provided by the town. There?
Yeah, you, 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 I gotta tell you something, we're talking about five thousand dollars. I've said what I've said, I've got a a concern here about ownership in this, in the second instance. You guys do whatever you want, I I just not. Intellectual property, is that what you're thinking a little bit down the lines of, if they're putting the data in, do they own that intellectual property? I have a concern, but that might be a misplaced concern.
Okay.
But as the town's attorney, I'm, I, to me, I'm obligated to to make those kinds of statements.
And remember the.
But if it's a budgeting issue, if there's a problem on the budgeting, then you go from there. If there's a problem later on, well, we'll have to deal with it then. Can we move the money from the enterprise? Across into another town account? And then pay for it out of that town account, well, we're technically getting the money from the enterprise, as he's suggesting. But we pay it from a town account and not a wastewater account, I I'm just thinking off the top of the box. That's not a solicitor issue, that's more of a finance director issue, okay?
We can take.
But I just have a concern. I have a concern about how it's budgeted. Uh Joe asked me about it, and I, I, that's my concern.
We take the five thousand dollars.
I gotta, I gotta tell you this, this is where I'm coming from, I I don't have any experience with the federal government. But I do have experience with the town of Lincoln. Now, Brian, you might remember, we had an issue. With with the program for the sewers. Okay, and there was a claim and 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 actually the vendor on that thing held up the town, I had to go to court. To get that, to get that program, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm I'm basing this on my own experience, maybe.
I hear you loud and clear. We can take it out of the council contingency son, fund, Mr. Marshall, you know how much we have in that?
I don't think we have enough.
Between now and when this bill needs to be paid, we will find out. Through Mr. uh Marshall, where the five thousand is gonna come from. Remember, we've doubled the sewer usage to repay ourselves the two hundred and fifty thousand that we were under last year. So, next year, we're gonna have five thousand dollars. To buy this now and wonder about where the fives are gonna come from, you can stay there, though, I don't know, you can help me. We need to look at the budget and accurately identify where it's gonna come from, but tonight we can give permission.
I don't have, I don't have a problem giving permission, um.
Based on getting an answer where it's coming from.
And then we'll figure out where the funds are coming from, is that okay, Tony?
Well, contingent on the correct line item, yes.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve uh the. To, who's gonna be signing it, the Council President or the Town Manager?
Uh.
Just says discussion and actual approval regarding cloud-based maintenance system. I'll make a.
Just make it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchasing a cloud-based maintenance system, uh financing pending or. From the finance, contingent from where the finance director says we can get the money. Next month, well, then we can appropriate it.
Correct.
Can, can, can you, can you just add to that motion that then we'll refer it to the Budget Committee to uh. Figure out where the budget gonna come from, but don't look it up.
All right, we, we, okay.
Our treasurer, look at the budget and tell us. What line item we have, through town property, to buy a five thousand dollar software.
It might be contingent, so we might have enough in the contingency fund.
We may, we'll get the answer.
Okay, so we don't have enough in it, yeah.
So we'll have four thousand there. And uh. And we'll get another thousand someplace else. We're giving, we're, we're granting the permission.
To buy it.
To buy it, come back with us with a recommendation on the line item that. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have. Discussion in action and authorization for the town manager to sign a grant agreement with Rhode Island Department of Education for Math Matters Program.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is the fourth round of uh, if you remember, recall, we participated in this before. Uh, this is giving mathematical skills and opportunities to students after school. Uh, this is gonna be run by the um Social Services Department, uh which they've already done before, they worked with the. Poxon Rec Department over the summer, and this is the next uh installment of that program. So there's no cost to the town, uh we will get twenty thousand dollars from uh. The Department of Education to run this program.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the grant agreement with the Department of Ed for Math Matters.
Second.
All in favor? Next, we have a big update on the Department of Treasury IRS penalty.
Thanks, Mr. President, if you recall, we've had discussion for probably almost a year now about a penalty, a civil penalty. That the town Warren incurred uh eighty-one, uh eight thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Uh for uh a misstep a couple of years ago, um we've appealed to the IRS a couple of times, um. And they have finally agreed with us, and uh they are going to waive this penalty, so there's gonna be no cost to the town.
Good job, Aaron, thank you.
There's that five thousand. Thank you.
We never had it.
Could have been. All right, next we have uh Finance Director, now Town Solicitor. Request a motion for the executive session, closed session, pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two forty-six five. A two litigation update regarding. Uh Giovanni Chichio and Warren Gateway versus Town of Warren, uh PC twenty twenty-two zero five two nine four. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gotta be real cool.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have request a motion for the executive session, closed session pursuant to RIGL forty-two forty-six five. Eight-two litigation update regarding Lanny versus Rezzy, PC twenty twenty-four. Zero five eight four six, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tromley.
Aye.
Scronin.
Aye.
Mr. Hamley.
Aye.
Mr. Rego.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay.
And where's my thing?
Now what? Now. Finance Director.
So.
Was you again?
Yeah, so, and I figured we'd incorporate the two because a lot of that stuff we're gonna talk about, so the first thing on my agenda was. To talk about the uh. Uh, the audit, if Jim. Jim, just give an update on the audit.
Where is those things? Oh yeah, that's right. He looked getting to serious, all in one.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, uh, great, uh, good evening, folks, uh, on behalf of the Budget Committee, Sheila and Mark Furtado. Uh, at the last meeting, you asked us to look at, uh, just uh, for the record, the. The discussion regarding that twenty twenty-four audit for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Worked closely with staff. Um, and um, you know, that was the snapshot as of sixteen months ago, and we heard your mandate to look into that. Uh, bottom line, um, after the manager and the finance director and others and. We discussed this, the bottom line is, it's really not a material uh impact on the statement of our account, and in fact. It might be uh more uh damaging to actually.
Can that be made bigger? Or is that this?
We're, we're not talking about.
We're not talking.
Talking about the audit right now.
Oh. Thank you.
Okay, so.
I wonder I can't see.
All right, so bottom line is, the consensus is to leave that audit for the period. Ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as it is, don't fight to pull it back, could in fact be. Uh, more deleterious to withdraw it and reissue it. So that was a thought that came from the folks that work on the bonds, discussions that we've had, so I think we should put that one. So I think we should put that one to bed, what we did learn along the way in close consultation with. Mike Abruzzi and others are the, the root causes of how uh we got to that painful meeting last month. And a course of action, a plan of action milestones for fixing it. That includes um among other things, having a plan for addressing the special revenue funds. Uh, using the twenty twenty-five audit as an opportunity to work through some of those items. Probably about eighty percent of the value, and then addressing the rest. By the end of calendar year twenty twenty-six, as well as developing some SOPs with the town manager. And the finance director to ensure that there are proper reviews and audit, I'm sorry, proper reviews and clearances. On the audit documents coming forward, so basically. Put twenty twenty-four to bed. Let's fix what we can in twenty twenty-five and just keep moving forward. This is part of the narrative of we're moving in the direction. It's a good news story of a normal operating procedure. New leadership at Town Hall, new finance director, uh new folks involved in the Budget Committee. We're getting to a normal course of business. So, that's the update on the audit. From our perspective, as you asked us to look at it last month.
So, so again, one of the things that needs to happen is, and, and that's one of the things that Jim said is before. It goes to the order general, it needs to be reviewed and we have to have a policy in place in order for that to happen. The second thing I found uh was that uh we had findings going back to two thousand and seventeen. My concern is we've had several audits uh from two thousand seventeen till now, so what's happened is every year we've been paying twenty-five thousand dollars. For an audit, things have been addressed, but nothing has been done about it, so that should be a lesson learned, as soon as we get an audit. And there's an issue, it should be taken care of right away, very difficult to go back, you know, five, seven years and try to figure these things out, but we will figure them out. And, and the third thing I've learned from this experience is that we need to keep uh better records going forward. Very important, but sometimes it's hard to find these things if you don't have uh proper records. That's about it.
Yeah. Sheila, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I, I agree with what Jim said, um we did um talk to folks familiar with um the bond ratings. To make sure that, you know, the error, if you will, that was in the financial, not in the financial statements, but in the notes. Would have no effect to the bond rating, which is important to us through the regional school district. So, we really do feel that we have covered our bases and do feel that uh it's not material.
Good, thank you.
Great, and uh just one other thing that we'd add is, for what it's worth, on N B two. The data elements that the councilman is proposing uh to be included in the budget process. These are uh requests that we endorse this, this list of items, I think this will help.
So since you're there, let's just, if we could talk about it right now.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to get in the way of your, I just wanted to say, we, we think this is a good list and uh. This is great, we're looking forward to being part of the budget process uh in the coming.
Basically, this is something I proposed a couple of months ago.
This is page eleven, right?
Well, that's, that's a different uh. So, wha- what I'm proposing in I'm. And I would like to have it by ordinance, I know we had this discussion by policy, what happened to Tony, he's still there, right? And I'm proposing to have this by ordinance and, and I'll tell you why. I don't plan on being here in a couple of years, well, when my term's over and I'd like to see something fixed, so there is a process going forward. We've all been here a long time, and that process, the Daniel thing, sometimes it doesn't happen the way it should. So having it set in stone to me is, is really important. And uh what I'm looking for is a budget time that we have two years of past history. Uh, of what was budgeted and was actually spent, a two-year average. Uh, also a current year-to-date. A year-to-date tells you what direction you're going in and it's. The budget, when, when he makes that presentation, you'll see what I mean. The, the new budget amount should have explanations if there's a five percent variance. At budget time, we should also review all of the town fees and fines. We've talked about it, a year's gone by and really haven't done it, but I think at budget time is the appropriate time to do that. Another thing that we uh should be doing is reviewing, reviewing the debt service, debt service is very important. We should be reviewing uh the special revenue funds, and that's something I'm gonna be proposing that, once we get them settled, because. A lot of them are a bit out of scope and it's something that Gary has to work on, but that's uh special revenue funds, we should be looking at every month. We should know where we're at. And then uh the last thing is we should have a five-year capital plan. Now, one of the things I've recognized with a five-year capital plan, I'm concerned about it, is our debt services. The highest it's ever been and it has a lot to do with sewer, but we still need to look ahead and have that in front of us. Because if there are things of emergency, like the sewer department, I, I think the Budget Committee would, would agree with me, there are a couple of things on there that really need to be addressed. So that's what I'm proposing, and I'm proposing that we do this in, in uh as an order, in that policy. Cause I don't want, I don't wanna lose sight of it, and if anybody has anything that they can add to this, I'm.
Well, I have, I have a question, so all of this comes in uh understanding that the five million dollar payout was the biggest hit. Right? So like with our debt service, yeah, the only thing we have debt service on was the sewer plant, because that's all. That back when we could afford going out to bomb for something, we did. And I'm just bringing up matters of fact, that, you know, some of these things are where they're at because. We're at the, as you know, to the beginning of. Of creation of uh potential.
So Joe, let me, let me just say this, let, let me.
It, it does make sense for the snapshot in time and looking at the institutional knowledge that the members on this of, of your council have. Not, we may not always have this depth of knowledge on the council about where the money sits. And if we're able to have, or I'm sorry, the expenses we've had in the history, uh writing it down, having a five-year.
Problem with that, what I'm trying to say is, like, when you look at the review of debt service. We don't have any, other than our bond that we paid back for the sewer plant, so I have no problem with the process. So it's on process.
So I'm talking process, you don't have to do anything, but you need to, you know where exactly where you stand and you need to talk about it. So years ago, when we had debt service, every year we would borrow, and every year something would retire. We don't have that luxury anymore because we have that twenty million dollars, that's gonna take a while before we get rid of that. So, um having this in process is very important. Two years ago. Two years ago, I remember I was back there, John, you were president, and you were discussing the, the budget, and you kept asking, but how much was last year, how much is this? And I even brought up, oh, why don't you have last year's? In all three years, and I'm not blaming anyone, but you were all here and you've been here for many, many years. In last year's budget, we had fifty-two thousand dollars for revenue with the pilot program from the water company. Okay, the problem is, two years prior, we hadn't had it for two years, that revenue, but it got in here, so. I'm not blaming anyone, but we need a format that we can see things, we can see trends. And we need to have it in front of us, and again, we're all experienced, we've been doing this for a long time, but the next people that come along. Maybe a new town manager or treasurer's not going anywhere, uh manager's not going, but, so these people have something in place, that's what I'm looking.
Right, so ordinarily, this would be the, in our, this is the beginning of our budget. So, when, when you're talking, again, what I'm trying to get to, John, give me a chance. Because of what we've been through, I think that some of these practices have been kind of not cast off, but. Made irrelevant by the fact that the fifty-one thousand dollars, you call that a typo. There wasn't fifty-one thousand dollars and the pilot program doesn't exist anymore. So technically, it was a carryover that probably shouldn't have been there, more of a typo than a. Tightening up our belt, policy-wise, sure.
And what you just said would have been fine, it could have been a typo, or you hadn't done it for two years prior, that's, that's.
Was a typo, but what I, what I mean to say, put lesser, better words in the. Math world there, accounting world. It was a carryover that shouldn't have even ever made it, so I call it a typo because it shouldn't have made it.
We went through three finance directors in like a year and a half, that's part of the problem.
So, 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 and, and that is a part of the problem, because sometimes we rely too much.
But I think these are, I think these, to stick to the point, I think these are all great initiatives, Mr. Nissisno, how do we make?
Put those requirements in the form of a motion for budget cycle.
Correct, what I'm concerned about is that the discussion's starting to go beyond.
Right, so what I'd like to do is in format of an ordinance, so I know it's gonna be there for years to come.
Those were examples, that's all.
Yeah, that, that, that can be done, yes.
I'll make a motion, we ask the solicitor to draft Mister Rego's suggestion in the form of an ordinance to be presented at the December Town Council meeting. Does that work?
You go. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Oh, yeah. There's a second, and all in favor? Thank you.
So the third part of my uh thing is.
Really thought it was it.
No, 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 so that's what you were looking at the camera, is there a way of making that camera any bigger?
Oh yeah, so that is.
So, this is.
Can you, the bottom parts, the whole top part doesn't matter.
So we used to look at our numbers on a monthly basis, I'm gonna let Gary take over from here.
This is what it was gonna be, you want another meeting?
No.
Alright, that's why I put it on tonight's agenda.
So if you can scroll, just scroll down and. So unfortunately this.
That's alright, go back to the other thing.
You actually have, you should have a copy, need to pack it up.
I'm looking for it, I thought I had it, is this it? Centerville Settlement?
No, that's the cash um sheet, should be stapled.
Gary, did you wanna start with cash balance sheet, or do you rather start with the uh?
Um, we can do either.
Yeah, I think maybe start with cash balance.
Where are finance? Radio, it looks like this.
I didn't get one of those.
Yeah. I don't think I have these. Is it on our, on the desks to- tonight?
And was it in the back, the electronic?
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't have it in my agenda.
Wait, you know what, I'll share mine with John.
It's okay. We can all see it.
Are we on the finance directors?
Yeah, this.
A- agenda? We're still under Lou's? What number?
But this is.
N B two.
This is part of the finance.
Jared, it would be nice to know where we are in the agenda.
He's letting us know.
It's N B two.
N B two. I've got a pile of stuff on me.
And I think this would be B.
So, so let, let me correct something here. In order to get that on the screen, this was part of uh Gary's presentation, alright? I had put it on my agenda, but Gary's given the presentation, so if you go on the finance director, if you're looking at your computer and click it, you'll see it.
Yeah, that's number one under my, that.
It's undefined, that's what screwed me up, I was still looking on the loose.
Yeah.
So now uh Gary's taking over. There you go.
And I don't have this.
So this is the one that says Centerville Settlement?
No.
No, that's the, I'm gonna go over that as well, but that's the um, the cash um.
So this is, am I correct, this is the twenty-five, twenty-six revenues and expenditures?
Yes.
Okay.
This is not. I know, but it's not in the electronic backup.
Alright, so we had.
It's not on you. We just didn't get it.
But you get it in front of you on the screen then.
Hey, I can read it from here, your eyes are much younger than mine.
Okay, gentlemen, let's, let's stick to the, go ahead, please.
So, I've been given this a couple of months now, um. So, the first sheet is a summary page, so that summarizes the whole budget. Um, starts with revenue on the top. Um, key items you wanna focus in on is the percentage column, which is in the middle of the totals. So right now, we're at, um, we're four months into the year. It's a third of the budget, so you, you should be looking for percentages around thirty-two. Do you look at, look at the police department, they're right on, spot on, thirty-two percent. That's because they're. You're gonna find other departments where they're like state recreations.
So why is this one eighty-two percent, eighty-one percent?
Who's eighty-one? Oh, debt services, cause debt services we pay, usually when we set up debt, we pay it first thing in the year. So Joe, I usually a big, big month for debt service.
Plus we paid a million dollars.
Yeah, that was, that's another, that's a hundred percent.
And then Harbor Master, there's. There's a fifty-one percent.
Yeah, see, same thing, Harbor Master would be.
Harbor Master probably because the mowing fees come in all at once, beginning of the year.
Well, that's, that's his expenses, you're looking at.
I don't have one.
So, yeah, Harbor would be the same type of thing, um probably during the winter, this, this stuff's gonna go down.
The, and then Rack is at sixty percent?
Which one, sorry?
Recreation?
Recreation, so, so she had busy months. You know, it's gonna teed her off in the winter and then come pick back up in the, in the spring, so. That's, you know, tho- some of those departments are a little, you, you gotta look at it and say, well, what's happening there? So, the um, the thing you, you can always look at too, is if, if you wanna see um. So with each of these departments, there's a backup sheet on there, so um. If you wanted to look, uh, um, so it starts with like the town manager, the police department, every sheet has a backup and it will break out all their budget lines. So you might find one items drawing the whole. It, it's bringing down their whole percentage.
President, I ask a question.
Absolutely.
What is the point, like what is, what are the apartments that are not living up to standard to this point in the fiscal year?
What?
What are the ones that you're, that you would be concerned about? That we should be concerned about as the council?
I look at this, I, I don't really see any major concerns.
So why are we going over this?
Well, let me answer the question, cause I put it on the agenda. What, the reason why we're going over it, it seems like I'm the only one that's monitoring these budgets, and we, and I'm just trying to.
Well, you're not the only one that's monitoring.
Okay. Okay, so let me ask you a question, I wasn't here last month, and this was concerning to me, and this is why I put it on the agenda, if we could go town to the.
I have to use.
Lou, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, so, cause it wasn't in my packet, so I don't know what's being talked about right. Show you on the screen here. If we can go to Public Works, could you find Public Works on there, please? This is a very simple format. This is a simple format.
If you have the paperwork.
The thing is, I think we get this paperwork every month.
Not like this.
If we go to trash collection.
What page?
Well, seventeen.
And say that's right there, go over, is that the?
You see trash collection? I think that's line.
Okay, twenty-five percent has been spent.
Okay, you could see thirty, so line thirty, okay, so you see that twenty-five percent has been spent, right?
Yes.
That's okay, the problem is this. In July, uh, the pay, the bill wasn't paid, in August it wasn't paid, September wasn't paid. Why was a vendor not paid on a monthly basis is a concern, and it's a concern because when this vendor goes out. And, and does his proposal again, it could affect will be paid because we're not paying in a timely manner. These things need to be paid on a timely manner is what I'm saying.
So, if I may, Lou, it's clear that there was no payment in July or August or September, there was one payment. In October, does that not suggest to you that is a quarterly payment?
Nope.
No, it's not.
It's a monthly payment, and again, I'm not trying to blame anybody, all I'm trying to say is, we all have to do, not, Brian, I'm not blaming.
For whatever reason, the bills were not getting to us, and when we, actually, Amy, myself, and you all. Realized at the same day that they had not paid, so when I went back to the office, I reached out to their. Uh, finance, you know, they're bill-paying people, they were like, oh, yeah, we, we've been mailing them, but. We get them habitually, I mean, they come into this off, they come into clerk's office, they put them in a box, I get it, we pay it, we've never missed with them. So somehow for three months, we didn't get it, they sent me them, we paid them that same day, but it was one of those that was very concerning to us too, cuz. I believe you noticed right away too, that there was no payment coming out.
Brian, you can understand my concern, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Everyone has to look at this on a monthly basis. Are things getting paid, or, or is there something wrong? The budget is our responsibility, a lot of times we say it's the treasures, it's, it's really our responsibility. And there's a format that's easy to follow, that's all I'm saying, and we should be following that format. Uh, another thing on the revenues, if you look at the top, and, and Gary, you've done a wonderful job putting this together. If you look at the top, the revenues for the transfer station in July was one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And in August is twenty-four thousand, four thirty-five, and again, I know what happens sometimes, it's when you send it in. But that means that we need a better accountability on these things, and they have to be done monthly on the right way, you understand what I'm saying?
I, why did we, uh, not pay MAGA for, uh, mega for?
We just went through that, it was the bills, the bills got, the bills got misdirected.
We have this all set up, so I knew what to ask when I got back.
Listen, I hope you understand my point, my point is that. We all have to review this on a monthly basis, and for it to get away three or four months, that means that we're not all looking at it, it doesn't take long. This, i- it's a five-minute meeting with the trade, can't all be on, on, uh, the problem of treasure. And when the shit hits the fan, we're responsible for these things, and that's why we need to keep better eye on this, cuz it's our budget.
I missed something while I was out of the room, uh, yeah, of course, this is important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so, Gary, go ahead.
It's the budget.
So, another, uh, uh, the reason I put this together like this too, so. We never really tie, you never really tied your revenues with your expenses for departments. Going forward, within, when we go into a new system, definitely gonna do that, um, and the, the reason why you wanna look at that is. Um, take, uh, an example is the, the fire department. So, their big revenue is the third party for the rescue runs. If for some reason, let's say their budget, we, we end up getting a lot more revenue than they're budgeting. Their expenses are probably gonna go up too. So you, you look at it and you'd say, well, you know, they're not, they're, they're over in their expenses, but you know what, they're over in their revenue too, so. There, there's a correlation, yeah, and that's what you kinda wanna look at. Um. So, so that's why I included it like this, and, and going forward, hopefully, when we, we go in a new system, it, the reports are gonna look like this. I'm gonna give them this and say, this is what we're looking for, um. So, yeah, so, um, yeah, so, uh, you know, and, and anytime you guys have any questions, don't hesitate. You know, you get this report, and you see something that doesn't, you gotta be, don't hesitate to call me in, I'll, uh, you know, I'll, I'll run it down for you.
It's great.
Okay, so, this is great, and I'm glad that you're satisfied, or hopefully you're satisfied with this level of documentation and this. Format to, to look at the numbers, and I think it's great that you are on the council, and that this is your absolute. You know, this is, this is your sweet spot here, is looking at numbers, this was your profession for years. I rely more on the professionals in the room, and like John mentioned earlier, we've been through how many. Finance directors in the past few years, what I would prefer, this is great, and I will look at this and whatnot. For your monthly presentation to us at these meetings, is to say, okay, here is a, a one-pager. Where these are the areas where I see concern, this is what I think you should do, this is how we are addressing this. I do not need to be looking line by line, per- pers- going across, I, that's not my job.
I can do that, I, I mean.
I want a one-pager with your assessment of where we are, month by month, and then month over month. And if Lou wants to dig deeper into it, bless you, child, but that's not what I'm gonna do. I am gonna rely on the professional, I'm gonna rely on the manager to be on top of the professional, I'm gonna rely on the budget committee to be. Backup for when we're having problems, that's what I'm looking for.
That's okay.
That's okay, but, and again, Carrie, I'm just showing you that there's a simpler format, and if you look at, you know, um.
It'll prepare us better for budget time.
And again, I'm, I'm trying to, and we should all have our eyes on it, Carrie, and, and, and the format is very simple, and you know that when. When we're looking at something that's gonna go over, uh, when you're looking at the percentages here, it's, it's something that we can look at and say, hey, you know what? They should all have their eyes on it, but we all need to have our eyes on it, we can't just blame one person, is what I'm saying, you know? It's a simple format. Right, John?
Simple.
It is a simple format, right? But Lou, what I'm saying is, if I looked at that, and I didn't get the chance to, cuz I didn't have it. But if I did get a chance to look at that, and I saw three months of no payment, and then in the fourth month of a payment, I would assume it would be paid quarterly, cuz it doesn't notate anywhere that it's not. Quarterly or monthly or anything like that, so even though I might have this in front of me, I don't know. That it's not supposed to be a quarterly payment, and so I'm just asking, again, kinda, just try and understand. Is this gonna help make us better come budget time?
Yes, and we're gonna move on now, cuz we're, we're getting off of the, of the discussion, which is the item versus. The specifics, the example.
Stuff will, will definitely help towards budget, and, and some suggestions as well.
Sorry, where are we now?
We are on, I believe, finance director two now, correct?
Yep. Cash balance report.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, the cash balance.
Oh, oh, that's up there?
Cash balance sheet up there. Cash balance.
Cash balance.
We have the paper.
We have the first time.
Yeah.
We have it.
That we have the paperwork for.
We have it. Yeah.
Yeah, we have the paperwork for that.
No, I said. You can't leave it up there? Can, can you put it up there?
Yeah, put it up there. Falling apart.
Watching program now?
Yeah.
As her programs on.
In our, yeah, what's that? Out for us.
Everything was going good for a while. And then we started drinking.
No, it should be, it should be the first, so. It's a separate, um.
So are we done with this?
No, we're on the next sheet.
We're on page three, we go back.
No, 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 we only have this to do.
Yeah, no, we're on Gary's, we're down here.
Yeah, okay, so we are back, we are.
We're on page twelve.
We're on page twelve.
Number two, here we go.
Okay, thank you.
Stop it. Radio, this, Centerville Bank, Centerville Settlement.
So quickly, this is just.
No, take your time, go ahead, fine.
Um, so thi- this is what I've been giving you every month, is, uh, the cash balances.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The, the top ones are restricted funds, that first one is your settlement, two million dollars. Um, it should be one million dollars now, because we paid, in July, we paid a million dollars. It's in a CD that comes due on the twentieth of this month, so at that point, we'll be taking that million dollars into our budget.
Okay.
Now wait, is that? Cuz we got a settlement bond, which was to go back in there, and we budgeted one million dollars in the budget.
Right, but we put it, but we put it in a two, we put it in a CD.
Okay, so this is not from the settlement bond, this is the money that we actually put in the budget.
The bridge?
No, it's the bridge bond.
That's the bond. That we put two million dollars into a CD to earn forty thousand dollars in interest, and our payment is gonna come out of that two million dollars.
Right, so in our budget, in your budget, there's two lines, there's.
Which we.
Best line for a million dollars.
Okay.
And there's a revenue line for a million dollars.
Okay.
We paid out the expense.
And then we put it back in with the settlement.
And then we're gonna bring the, the, uh, revenue into, into the budget.
Okay.
Okay, the reserve funds, I, um, I gotta do some research on these and see what, you think, see what these are, um. Reserves for, I have no idea, um, but I, I, I'm gonna open to that. Um, operating funds is just, uh, operating cash, so there's, um, an investment account. What I use the investment account for is, when we collect a lot of money at the beginning of the cycle, I put it in investment account, we earn some interest on it. As we pay the schools every month, I draw down a million at a time and pay the schools. Um, and then the municipal checking account is just our, where we pay everything out of, including in that. Municipal checking account, that includes all your fund balance, all your fund activity as well. So everything kinda, it's a, what they call a pooled account, everything kinda flows through there. So.
Can I point out a couple of things that's important, if you could go down and move it over a bit? Can you move, it can't move?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
This way?
Yeah, and go up now. So on that first two million dollars that you see there, uh, that's a CD, and Gary didn't take the, the million dollar there. Because it was earning interest, and I think it's locked up, locked up till a certain time, so what Gary did was took it out of our operation, so if you can go all the way down. Right?
Yeah, right there.
So right now, right now, when you're looking at that four point six eight four million dollars. It's actually five point eight four million dollars, because he took a million out of there. So once he takes it out of the top one, it's gonna replenish a million dollars at the bottom, you guys follow me, you go, you look like.
He, he told us that.
The, the, the other thing that to keep in mind, when you're looking at this operation, we have what is called special revenue funds. Okay? Those special revenue funds are funds that we can actually use the money, but they're really. Uh, set aside for certain, uh, the police, the, uh, the, uh.
It's usually grant funds.
Grant funds and stuff.
We used a certain amount of it last year out of the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
So there's probably about.
Taxing the people.
There's about eight hundred thousand dollars that's being used in that operations, that's really not our, our money, but we're able to use it. And one of the things that, uh, Gary's gonna be doing is getting those special revenue funds or reports, so we see it on a monthly basis where it's going. Now, if you look, if you look up again, I'm sorry, uh, do you see the opera funds? You see every month how you have, the numbers haven't changed much, okay? So, so, no money has been spent since, let's say, June. Okay, so that would be a concern, and that's when we gotta start asking the question, why haven't those funds been, been spent now? I know the answer, one of them is to the computer, and, and there are a couple of other things, but those are things that we should be looking on a monthly basis, when funds are there and asking. Why is it still there? Uh, the special revenue funds, same thing, uh, if we get a report on a monthly basis, and we don't see those numbers changing, we should be asking the question, why aren't the funds be changing? So, these are all, and I know you're not all, uh, used to it, but it's something that we should be looking at on a regular basis and asking the questions. Why aren't these funds being used, okay, or if we see something on the line, we should be asking. Again, this interests me, I can understand how other people, it doesn't interest, but at the end of the day, we're, we're, at the end of the day, we're all responsible for it.
These are financial tools that are at, are in our box, and they help us understand and identify. Uh, where our money's going and coming from.
Okay.
You're not wrong, Louis. Alright. Let's all go back to page two, no, we're gonna move forward. Now, three, discussion in action regarding the financial management system bid, yes, you can shut that off now, my honor. That was a joke, we're not going back to page two.
Okay, so, um, we, um, we went out to bid, uh, for the financial software, we had three bidders. Um, it was Edmunds who, who we're currently with.
Mm-hmm.
Um. A, a Clarion, um, who, um, only operates in Florida. I know, looked down on that, and then there was Munus, um. The prices were astronomical.
Wait, Tyler.
Tyler is muted.
Tyler.
Tyler technology, yes.
Everybody calls it something different. Um.
What I'm looking at here?
Edmunds was the lowest bidder, by far.
Okay.
Um, we brought it, um.
Listen, not necessarily true.
We, um, we looked at, um, all their, um. We, we had them do demos for, for all three of them, um. Self, the, um. Brian and the, uh, uh, budget committee all watched the demos, and we discussed, um, what's, what our plan of action would be. Um. We're thinking, cuz the, the price is so low, that we should stay with Edmunds, Edmunds does have a, what they tell us, they have a better. System than what we're using, so it would be an upgrade with them. Um. It, the, the difference is. Um.
Want me to jump in? So, uh, a- as you can see from the, the prices, obviously Tyler was really up there. Um, the, the Clarion, as, uh, Gary said, they're, they're a new company, they've only been in business five years. They have nobody north of, of Georgia, um, so, the discussion with the budget committee, uh, with, uh. Uh, Pauline, who's that experienced with, uh, software, was that they were not a company that we wanted to take a, a gamble with. As far as that goes, um. When we met with Edmunds, we discovered that, um, part of the problem. Is that we have not taken advantage of the training that Edmunds offers. Uh, we discovered from several employees that they never actually really had any training from Edmunds. That they had, you know, they got training from somebody who's at the desk next to them, and if they were doing the wrong thing, then. We were continuing to do the wrong thing, um, so, uh, the discussion with the, the budget committee and, and, uh. Uh, Pauline and Gary and myself is that, uh, Edmunds has a similar package, uh, with. To Tyler, they have the same features they'll be able to give us. One of the benefits with Edmunds is that there's no conversion pro- uh, process, one of the big expensive. Uh, uh, prospects or aspects of a new software is the conversion. Of your old data to new data, and there's always kinks and, and training issues there, so. Uh, we looked at it, that Edmunds is, uh, we'd be able to convert our data, or not even have to worry about converting our data. Because it's the same, uh, computer language, uh, there are some big improvements that we'd be able to take advantage of. Um, and, you know, that includes training, some equipment that we're gonna need, um, um, some consult, consultation to help make sure that. Uh, it is a smooth transition, uh, but from all of our discussions, uh. It's our recommendation that we, uh, go with, uh, improvement with Edmunds software.
Stay in.
I got, I, I mean, the biggest problem that I saw that we had with Edmunds. Is when we were going through all of these finance directors and the assistants and this and that, nobody knows how to use it. Nobody else in the state uses it, from what I understood, so we, every time somebody came in, they all knew the other software, but nobody knew Edmunds, so we couldn't use it. If it, if it's gonna be the same thing, if nobody else uses Edmunds, if we've got an Edsel, and nobody knows how to drive it, what good is it? I'm not saying you're going anywhere, Gary, but in the future, if you decide to go somewhere else, we got a system. That we don't know how to use, and the person coming in doesn't know how to use.
Well, s- some of the issues with, with Edmunds that we, I see that you, you guys were having is, I, I think the setup is bad. I, I think from the start, the, the chart of accounts is very confusing, um, there's way too many levels of. Entry, the, um, I'm going into detail with, um. It, it, this new system will be a lot cleaner, so, you, you know, you're not making. That, every time you make an entry in Edmunds, it seems like there's like four entries that go, that are in the background, and that'll be a lot cleaner. And it makes it a lot easier to understand, um, as far as, I mean. A, a, an accountant can work with, uh, an accounting system, choosing out a problem, um, I'm. Julie, I'm digging in pretty, pretty good with Edmunds, um, it, it took me a while, I'll be honest with you, you know, and even some stuff now, I'm like, um, you know. But I, I think if we clean it up, and we get it working properly, I think going forward, it, it, it'd be similar to any other accountants.
It's true, yeah.
Yeah, so, so one of the biggest issues that we're not even mentioning here, we're kinda banging Edmunds a little bit, but we haven't had an, uh, an update in how many years?
Well, well, it's not that it wasn't updated, it, it, um. I mean, they were doing, they were doing updates, as a matter of fact, they just did one last month. Um they they're automatic updates, when the system needs to be updated, it it it's getting updated. We've, I I I don't know if that was the ish issue or if it was a bigger issue that. Nobody really knew what to do with it.
I can tell you for the last year of our finance director, they didn't go near it.
Yeah.
So with our previous director for one calendar year, it it was kryptonite. Now, the next issue I think we should look at, and John, you're always bringing this up, what about annual expenditures? I mean, annual expenses.
Well, that's.
So the other programs are very high, right?
Yeah.
And the other programs that the rest of the state is using, if we were to go along with that system, that's a very hot cost costly.
Program. Yeah, you're looking at um like thirty thousand dollars. Versus nine thousand dollars, which is what we're paying now.
Now.
Actually, Edmunds, the annual fee will stay the same as it is right now, so the only difference is we have to pay the um. The conversion, it um it's um.
Any questions?
Eight thousand dollars up front.
Why is there such a big price difference?
I know.
Seventeen thousand to three hundred and seventy three.
Because they can. Really?
Was to keep our business, I guess. Another way of looking at it, probably, maybe.
I I mean, I looking at this, the price differential between Edmunds and the other two is pretty shocking, but. It I mean, the the Clarion isn't. As much of a jump as as uh Tyler is. But we've already ruled them out because they're in Florida and they're not working with anybody this far in the world.
And it's thirty two thousand dollars.
Exactly, exactly, so Edmunds seems to be like the only option.
So Gary, again, once we get into this contract, that we can have certain expectations of them or we could request that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, to me, looking at it enough, to me, it's a no brainer, even though it. It may be an inferior product, but three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less.
Buy a lot of pens.
I can buy a lot of finance directors.
And and Edmunds is being used in some Connecticut uh towns, so they they are close and they do have a um. Uh a users meeting every year, you know, training and annual training session that. I I don't think anybody ever really took advantage of any of that.
I believe, I'm not exaggerating, for the past calendar year, it's been not looked at as anything worth looking at. We've just been always told it was so horrible. Michael used to say it's not so horrible, you just have to know how to.
Yeah, it 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 does take, uh you know, I I I'll I'll grant you, it takes a while to get used to it. You know, but I think the new system, it won't be like that, but.
Gary, what system did you use in first book?
Yeah, so they had Tyler when I, well, I I actually was at the police station when they got Tyler, so I only saw the department side of it.
Okay.
Um and they only had it for a year, prior to that, they had the two years they had um what they call, it was um AccuFund. And then prior to that, it was just. Most of the time I was there, I was I was just using an access that.
Okay, let's stick to this, let's try to get out of here before tomorrow, um.
So. I'm gonna make a motion. That we award the we award the bid to Edmunds. It's a cool. Edmunds GovTech for the new financial software.
But Mr. President, could we add in there um uh training? Training and equipment, uh I believe Gary has a a breakdown of what we would need.
Yeah, so um. Cause we we have that those opera funds set aside for this. So we're not obviously not gonna use much of it because.
Don't worry, I'm trying to spend, I'm gonna spend the rest of it, alright?
Yeah, we gotta figure out.
So we're we're looking, um it was. Um the budget committee and and um this group got together and we decided to um. We needed a couple of things, we were looking to spend thirty thousand of that for a consultant. To um bring in and try and put together a um prestigious mania that will help in transitions.
Okay, do we have a total on that somewhere?
Um this was five, right?
Yep, yeah.
So we're.
Right now, you have.
Where's the?
So it was it was thirty thousand for um for consulting. Um then we're looking for seventy five hundred for training.
Oh.
And that would be, I would cover like overtime, if we yeah, we wanna do this after hours or.
Yep, I'm no, I'm looking for a sheet that's got the total.
Well, I don't think we gave you a sheet on that, I'm sorry.
This was last minute, we put this about. Um we're looking for four thousand dollars of that money to go for towards equipment, I think we need to get scanners for everybody who.
Don't lowball it.
Well, no, I.
I mean, in regards to what you need, if you need.
Is this crucial to do it now or can we wait till next month when you have an exact number for us to?
Uh no, we could probably do it, you know, we accept this this uh. Going with Edmunds and then come back with a with a not to exceed.
Yeah, that way.
Amount.
Okay.
You have two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred, yeah, there's two hundred and twenty of that was uh allocated for it, but we're not gonna.
Are your numbers under fifty with the the thirty, maybe probably under fifty or thirty?
Yeah.
When we make, if I make a motion to approve the bid from Edmunds GovTech with the additional training not. And equipment not to exceed fifty thousand dollars?
I think I better off coming back next month, that way, there's other things that we could address, I think would.
No, so it's the, it's award the bid to Edmunds GovTech.
To get you going and then come back with what you need next month. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you, and thank you, even though uh remember, some of our. Some of our uh strengths are accepting our weaknesses of each other. I should say, we need to make our strengths the acceptance of some of our weaknesses, so when some of us up here get tired and.
Mr. President, I just just add on to that, I'd like to thank the budget committee for.
Absolutely.
Uh for for participating in all, uh they they were at every um live demo, you know, they gave us a lot of input and. I know they get, they get no don't financial uh reward, but other than the fact that they're helping the town. And uh you know, I know for myself and Gary and Pauline, we appreciate their input, it's uh very important, so.
Coming in at zero. Thank you. Alright, uh. Tax assessment.
Yeah.
I got the sheet here.
We have uh, I had it somewhere over here.
I got it, I'll make a motion, we abate the twenty twenty five tax roll in the amount of two hundred and eighty seven dollars. And thirty seven cents.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. And I will make a motion that we put in addition to the twenty twenty five twenty five tax roll. In the amount of seven hundred twenty eight dollars and seventy six cents.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Rec director, discussion in action regarding the resolution in support of the Rhode Island Department of E. Environmental Management. Recreation Grant Application to retrofit the athletic weights and restore bleaches at Veterans Field. Anything else? Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have discussion in action regarding all tier mobile sauna rental fees, what do they charge in other towns?
I was not really able to find out.
You don't. They a little comp and just lets them go.
Well, Middletown, uh there's another one in Middletown, I tried to email her, but she did not get back to me.
I I I only know what what happened. They just let it go to South Shore Beach and now they let it go to uh to Kind Harbor.
So, yeah, so I just went with what we charge for facilities. Um using our fee structure that we already currently have.
And have you uh let her know that?
I let her know that there would be a fee, um but I I didn't let her know the amount, I I was waiting for you guys.
She, we don't know if she's gonna say like for that, no, I mean.
Um yeah, I I don't, I don't know, I mean, I can.
What, excuse me, if I could interrupt, please, because why don't we try uh we? She's ho- housed here in in Warren.
She is.
So she pays rent, the building pays taxes. Why don't we see how she does to encourage uh the business to to thrive here? Since the other communities aren't charging, let's see if.
There are other com- there are other communities that charge, not, but just not where she is. So there are other saunas.
Other saunas.
There are other sauna companies, like there is one at third uh, one of the beaches in Middletown. Um and she pays rent to Middletown.
Oh, alright, so it's not across the board that every place.
Right, there are a number of sauna companies, and she just owns one.
And the number you're looking at for use uh fees, how high or how low, what it what are we coming in at?
Compared to the other places.
I don't know, I I tried to contact a couple of them and I did not have any success.
So do you need uh this to happen in order for uh the process to begin, like when's her season beginning?
She was waiting to hear from us, she wasn't in a rush, um so. I wanted to get her a price first.
What were you thinking of charging?
This is what I was thinking of charging.
Four hundred.
Four hundred for a month.
Four hundred.
No utilities, she covers. Uh it seems reasonable to me, I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait, that's um four four hundred for the whole season?
No, per month.
Per month.
And how many months?
Shh, I think it was gonna be and uh it will start now in December and I think she'll go till April. April and May.
Uh saunas for four hundred dollars a month.
You know, she, this is for her to set up at the beach.
Sets up at the beach.
For to generate four hundred dollars a month to pay us, plus what she's gonna generate, that's a lot of people to go in and tie cider or sauna.
You'd be surprised.
Really? You'd be surprised.
It's a very popular.
Alright, I I can't even get in, I don't, I'm meeting this.
Why don't we do it one month?
I thought you were gonna say the door's too small.
Okay, alright, bringing it back, bringing it back, why don't we do it uh one month now? For the four hundred, and I I mean, I really wanna.
Well, why don't, why don't I go to her and say, this is what the council approved? If she has an issue with it, I can come back to you.
Yeah, thank you, that's what I'm hoping, I don't wanna see it be.
You don't wanna deter her.
It it, I don't know if there's gonna be such a big push now until it gets going, and I I don't want it to rehouse her here. And uh that's my big kinda.
I will, I will bring this to her if she has issues with it.
Trumply's motion stands, and is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't wanna not look at our businesses as, you know, getting her going. Discussion in action regarding Memorial Bench twenty six pricing, twenty twenty six pricing. Where are we gonna put them all? No more at the beach, right?
Um this, this is just the updated pricing. For the there, there are still. If somebody would like to come to that, I can get a price for that, but that is not something we offer. Normally.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty six Memorial Bench price prices as recommended.
I am adding, I I did add picnic tables.
Yeah, good. Uh alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, oh, thank you, that's all.
That's it, now it's executive session.
Nope, now we have Mr. Wheeler. Discussion in action on replacing the shelves on Grant and Ivy Streets with reclaimed asphalt as matter of course savings and availability.
Yeah, this is basically, uh we've had a really hard time this year trying to get shells and the price has doubled this year. So sixty yards is costing us around forty eight hundred, whereas last year and the years previous, we were paying under twenty two hundred eight. For sixty yards, so. We know that there's shells being used at the wharf and I'd like to keep it to the areas that are easier to get shells for and. Where our town actually really likes them, uh Grant and Ivy. I think they really want it paved, that obviously is a lot more money than what we have, but we have plenty of reclaimed asphalt for free range.
It's the beginning of paving.
Right, and reclaim at uh stuff that you have, it'll be almost like paving, right, once you roll it and stuff.
Yeah, if done correctly, it'll act as if, it'll last a lot longer and. It's it's a lot cheaper to get.
Any reason why the shells are so much more expensive?
I I'm not positive, I know that a lot of people having the same issues trying to get them.
They have to process.
A lot of it's coming out of the cape now.
Meat has to be removed.
Yeah, a lot of it's coming out of the cape.
The seagulls will get it.
Yeah, that happened in Tivon and then we.
Question for the solicitor, is is there any D E M sort of concerns, just because I know when it comes to replacing shells with. Asphalt is sometimes.
Shells are not considered permeable surfaces either, so I believe it falls down the same.
No, yeah, the answer is, there's there's no D E M concern with what is proposed.
Got it.
It was their emotion.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So like uh it, does it need to be shelves uh by the water there where? I don't know, is that a quite whatever they go.
Nowhere needs to be shelves, we're just keeping it for aesthetics for.
Right.
Most of it, I, what I was told by a lot of the guys that have been here for a while, that shells used to be really cheap, free. And they were using it that because it was easy to get, now with it becoming harder, we are looking at certain roads to start with.
There was a multi-million dollar lawsuit in Tivon.
For not processing them.
I know, but there was a massive lawsuit in Tivon that pretty much changed the way. Uh shells were used, they're all processed, they're all looked at as uh yard materials, whatever you call it.
Yeah, there's a reason I'm asking, every time I go down there, I love going down there, it might cause a mess, but is there a way of asking to see what people would feel about going with the uh? Or you think it's a lose?
Yeah, I mean, I I.
Yeah.
It would make our job easier if we, I mean, we've we've talked about other options of po- potentially just doing. The main drive in and leaving the parking space of shells, uh just to limit how much shells we're purchasing.
The uh you'd get the look, but at least where they parked.
Alright, can we have a motion on this item though?
Sure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Yeah, sure.
You know, that that's a good idea, Brian.
Alright, everybody, you don't have to go home, but you gotta go, we're gonna go into executive session to keep this fun happening.